It's 1 o'clock. I know the mayor will be joining, he's here, he'll join us shortly. If we can go ahead and move to item number two, which is a safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. James Massey, if you could please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so that we were prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? We thank you for the many blessings you have freely given to each of us. We ask for your presence to guide this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, provide them with the knowledge, compassion, and wise counsel needed as they discuss the business matters on the agenda today. Help us all to remember that we are stewards acting on behalf of our customers and provide us with the grace to serve all people well. We ask this in your name. Amen. Now please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. Item number three, which is public comment. Ms. Natalia, please.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting. We will invite pre-registered speakers to speak, and they may only address the board on CPS Energy-related business listed on the posted agenda. Speakers should state their first and last name, the organization or group they represent, and the agenda item they will speak about. For this meeting, we have two in-person speakers. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. Thomas, will you please cue the timer? Our first speaker is Henrietta LaGrange, followed by Didi Belmaras.
Good afternoon. My name is Henrietta LaGrange, and I belong to the member of the Mulberry Street Girl Gang, Rasunida, Lulek, Mind Shifted, Ed, Growing Up Brown. And I am so happy, really, to be here today. Like I told Mr. Garza, I didn't sleep well last night is because I do a lot of research. And in my research, I find out that CPS uses a metric system. And in studying this metric system, I'm going back to 2017 and quoting Ms. Paula Gold Williams, and because of the time, I'm just gonna fly through it, and I know you can read into the blanks, that this metric system, the way it is right now, it is meant to fail. And I hope we improve on it, because I do have a degree as a human resource director, and I love work. And when it comes to people and employees, it seems like it's a juicy piece of meat that I like to get my face into it and really dig into it, because I feel everybody should be treated in their own merits, not by the whole system or other departments, because sometimes, and I know this because I've worked, they work within themselves and feel like they should not say anything bad about other people instead of helping them get better. And they write him along, and I'm gonna quote this man on the meeting of last month, it says about employees, and I guess it's here at CPS, he says, "If you don't like where you're working, then don't work here." And I'm saying that, please don't, because you're holding progress, because CPS Energy is for those that put their heart in, like Mr. Garza. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Didi Belmaras.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Board. Rudy, Mr. Garza. Didi Belmaras with Public Citizen, going to be speaking on agenda number 12 regarding the STEP update. The STEP program is doing what it was intended to do, reduce community demand and carbon avoidance while also delivering savings, but it could also do more. You all have received a handout with recommendations from Public Citizen that would enhance the STEP program. Based on the analysis by Frontier Energy, Public Citizen is making two recommendations for enhancing the STEP program that will not only benefit the utility but customers as well. The recommendations for these two programs are based on their significant contribution to demand reduction, energy savings, cost effectiveness, and emission reductions. The first recommendation is to reinstate the solar PV rebate. Rebates should be offered to all customers with an added rebate amount for low-to-moderate income customers. The second recommendation was to increase and enhance the incentive to the Bring Your Own thermostat program. During the RAC meetings, it was said by several members that residential solar rebates were a subsidy to people who could afford to purchase the panels. I wish they had seen this report, and I hope everybody's read it. It's quite lengthy, but it's not really difficult to read. The report talks about the number of installations per council district. District Four had some of the highest amounts of installations. If you offer a rebate for a pool pump that delivers far less demand reduction, energy savings, cost effectiveness, and emissions reductions, it should follow that rebates be offered for residential solar PV. Also, if commercial customers enjoy a solar PV rebate which doesn't perform nearly as well, then so should residential customers. Voluntary conservation is important, whether it's asking customers to reduce demand through power players or cruise the lizard reminding us to reduce demand. But as CPS Energy considers a third rate increase, customers deserve the financial incentives to not only save the money, it saves the utility just as much. Given the demands on our grid and the climate crisis, we should be deploying all resources to provide reliability, resiliency, and sustainability. So I hope you all take a time to read the handout and dive deeper into the analysis. Thank you.
Thank you for a public comment. For those of you who participated, your continued feedback is important to us. Item number four, which is CEO recognition.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to go a little earlier in the agenda today. Last several months have been busy ones for our crews. In addition to their work in San Antonio, our crews have been sent to assist communities across the state with storm restoration. One of the benefits of public power is mutual aid, and our crews take great pride in it. And they work hard to restore power to our neighbors when they're in need. In late May, our crews headed up north to help our neighbors in Garland after they were hit with a storm with a category-two level hurricane winds. I want to thank Scott Corwin, who is the CEO of the American Public Power Association, for being with us today. He's here to present CPS Energy with a mutual aid commendation and recognition of our support in electrical, electric power restoration efforts in Garland. And at the end of my comments, we will move up to take a picture with Scott and the commendation. Scott, I'm gonna invite you up right now to make a few comments, and then I'll proceed. Thank you for being here. Scott is joining us from the West Coast and heading up to Ohio to talk to my counterparts at AMP as well. So, Scott.
Thank you very much, Rudy. And thank you, Chair, and members of the council. I am Scott Corwin, President and CEO of American Public Power Association. It's great to be with you today. I did want to thank, first of all, just the leadership. Rudy, you see him locally, he's the leader for us nationally. As is Chair Gonzalez, who just received the Spence Linden, Vander Linden, a public official award, which is a national APPA award. And CPS itself is really impressive nationally. It just got our Scattergood System Achievement Award. It's Diamond for Renewable Public Power Provider on Operations. And so out of 2,000 public power systems nationally in 49 states and five territories, you stand out in your dedication, and you exemplify this in the spirit of mutual aid. So on that, you answered the call when Puerto Rico needed you in 2017. You continue to closer to home. You answered the call with Light Up Navajo, where we have an initiative in the Navajo Reservation to help coordinate this year 48 utilities from 16 different states. They electrified 170 homes. Those of you that went, no, these are not easy homes to electrify. It's tough territory. There's still 13,000 left on that reservation needing electricity. So thank you for your help in that effort. And now, this last spring, answered the call with Garland. And this was a notable example of your commitment and your capability to mutual aid. They lost about half their system from hurricane-level winds. I guess I'd heard the G M picked up the phone, called Rudy, and Rudy just said, "Don't worry, we got your back." And you did. The resources and equipment you sent helped make a huge difference in Garland's response to this storm. I watched the video of when they did a board meeting right after that, and their ops folks were reporting, and they were emotional specifically about the folks standing before you today, how quickly you responded, how excellent you were, top-notch capability, truly the best, as they described it, and worked really well. It was really moving to watch that presentation. So on behalf of APPA, I am proud to be here today to present this commendation to you and your team of how you answered the call. And I'd like to thank you, all of you that were on the front line that made it happen, and the board for supporting, and Rudy and the team for making that happen, including Larry Aguayo, who is doing an outstanding job as a mutual aid coordinator for the state. So, yeah, we can read this, and maybe I'll present, but it is in recognition of its support for electric power restoration efforts. The American Public Power Association recognizes CPS Energy for providing mutual assistance to Garland Power and Light, signed by our mutual aid chair, Neil James, and Scott Corwin of APPA. Thank you all.
Scott, we'll take that picture right at the end of this, if you don't mind. So I'll call you back up here in a second.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So unfortunately, the storm that hit Garland was not the only storm that affected Texas this year. We sent crews to Houston twice to help them during both the Houston-Dedetchell storm in mid-May and again in the aftermath of Hurricane Burl, which has been, you know, widely covered across the state. Our crews worked hard, often in dangerous conditions, to assist with the restoration efforts in Houston following the widespread damage that was experienced there. When our crews are called upon to help, we answer the call. Please join in me in thanking these crews for all their hard work and commitment to help those in need. And now I'm gonna bring in the other group, and we'll do one big picture. On a lighter note, in coordination with the APPA, as Scott mentioned, CPS Energy sent nearly two dozen crew members to rural Arizona to bring power to three Navajo families. I think we've got a video that we're gonna share now, if we can go ahead and cue up the video.
We've gotten power to three customers, three different locations, all way out in the middle of the reservation. So it is, it's very, I'm not gonna say primitive, but it's way out and away from civilization. So it does mean a lot whenever we can do that little bit, which seems like a little bit to us, but it is a lot, and it means a lot to these great people.
It's just unbelievable that we're out here in the United States helping people get power that's never had power before. This is totally different than doing storm restoration, and we're building new lines to customers that never had power. That's who we are, right? We're public power, so we're always wanting to help one another. And it's also a great opportunity for our apprentices to learn, and, you know, this is practice hours towards the apprentices' program.
It hits, it hits home, and you realize how lucky you are back at home to always have electricity. And it gives us that much more moving forward, so we can keep doing a great thing for a great cause.
So while this was a training opportunity for our apprentices, the opportunity to bring power to families who've experienced, who haven't experienced electricity before speaks to what public power is all about, being ready to serve an extended community that needs help. Please join in me in thanking the APPA for their focus on providing this necessary long-overdue service to the Navajo Nation and our crews, who are dedicated their skills to bringing electricity for the first time ever to these families. When I learned about this program, and I saw the list of all the utilities from across the country that have participated in Light Up Navajo, I knew that CPS Energy had to step up and do their part, and I couldn't be prouder. To thank that there are people in this country still living without electricity, you know, it's heartbreaking, but I feel really great that our folks stepped up and did their part. So, thank you.
Does the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah. I'd like to, again, thank Mr. Garza and our team for going out. And I know since I've been on the board, y'all have done a tremendous job. Every year, there's some things that happen in other cities, and y'all pack up, leave your family, and go and take care of other families and for their needs. And I can't thank you enough, because this is truly a blessing to be able to have our team to go out and do work for other communities. Because this year, we, like you say, we had twice, Houston, Garland, and this other Navajo. That's just, thank you all enough, because y'all leaving your families. And I'd like to thank the community, because the community makes sure we have the funding to be able to do this, even though it's a pass-through with other communities sending the funding back to us. But in the meantime, we're doing it. So the community and this organization is really, it's a blessing to be, I'm thankful to be a part of it and to see y'all do great work. Thank you all.
Anybody else? Mayor?
No, my thanks as well to all of you and to all the staff here at CPS Energy. I think what you do goes beyond just taking care of families and helping communities get back to the very basics that they need to thrive and to, you know, survive. But what you're doing is giving us, as a community, a reputation all around the world about how San Antonio continues to step up for neighbors in need. I get an opportunity to talk to a lot of people from outside of San Antonio, and they know our community in large part because of these kinds of efforts. And so just thank you again on behalf of the entire community for making our entire city a place that we can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Romero?
Yeah, just, again, thanks to all of you, all of you. It's just amazing to see you doing your work. I have no idea how you do what you do, and I'm just so honored to be affiliated with all of you in any way in this organization. And special kudos to the movie stars in the video. It was a great video. So, thank you all. Thank you all.
Now, on a serious note, again, on behalf, and again, I can't speak to all trustees, but those who have spoken fondly about what has taken place. But I will tell you that I was born in the early '70s, and my parents didn't have running water or electricity. And so I will tell you that for someone who was born into those, that environment, thank you. This is why every decision I make at CPS, I'm very mindful for those who have means and those who don't have means. We have a responsibility as trustees to keep that in mind, not just from my personal experience, but that is, it's not just a financial fiduciary responsibility. We have a responsibility, at least that I take to heart, that we're there for the community. So on behalf of those of us who are still struggling to make ends meet, and those of us who are in this country who are still struggling, thank you very much, again, for taking time out of, again, your family and the things that you do for CPS. I will tell you as a trustee, I'm very mindful of the privilege that I have here on a day-to-day to make decisions, and I don't take that lightly. I take it with the utmost responsibility. So thank you very much. And APP for the recognition.
Madam Chair, if I could ask the trustees to step up to the front, and I'll ask Scott to come up, and we'll get a picture.
What a great way to start this board meeting. Again, I also want to extend another thank you to Scott Corwin for being here with us today, and thank you to the teams that worked to get the power to our Texas neighbors and to the members of the Navajo Nation. Again, gracias. A couple of, and I'm sorry, I skipped, so I just want to make sure we're clear for the public. We moved on to item number five, which is the chair's remark, and I apologize for that. So again, we're on item number five, which is just a couple of remarks for myself. And again, just what a great way to start this meeting. And so I just want to touch on a couple of points. And so in October, October 6th through the 12th, is Public Power Week and Public Natural Gas Week. And so just quick reminders, again, we have a lot of services that are available to the public, either through town hall meetings or to onsite community meetings, where, again, you can learn about some of the services we provide, to detect potentially a leak in your home before you dig. I think that's important to stress. One thing that you can count on from CPS is the benefit, again, of public power. Earlier was an example of public power. It is that they will always be ready to help our neighbors, and especially in Texas. There's a lot of advantages, again, to publicly-owned utility. Again, want to continue to applaud each of the team members who give each day to, again, our communities that we serve. Being owned by our community means local ownership, local decisions, and making and reinvestments that benefit all our community. Again, I want to thank our 3,600 employees for their work every day. You're crucial to the San Antonio community. I think we're gonna show a video of Public Power Week. Is that correct? Here we go.
... and natural gas services. This means local ownership, local decision-making, and reinvestments that benefit San Antonio. As a not-for-profit utility, we are focused on keeping your energy affordable, reliable, and sustainable. CPS Energy is committed to powering progress that benefits you and future generations.
Thank you very much for that great video. So I just want to move on to, currently, we're having town hall meetings, and so we've had the privilege of having one. And specifically, what we're covering during these town hall meetings is, again, building upon Vision 2027, which is a utilities strategic roadmap. And so we're, it's called Horizon 2050. And so, again, we will be hosting several in-persons and virtual town hall meetings to go over Horizon 2050's strategy. And this is an opportunity, again, for the community to give feedback to us. And so at the end of the year, once we gather the feedback, of course, it's gonna be presented to the board of trustees, and then we'll find ways to improve that strategic plan. Again, want to stress the importance of the community to participate. We can't do this without you. There's a lot of work. I'm, again, very proud of the work that's been done on 2027. We hope to finish that strong and then build upon Horizon 202050. On the screens are a couple of upcoming opportunities, including an open house that will be held at the headquarters here at CPS on October 3rd. It will be a Thursday. There will also be two sessions to come and talk to the team in person and to learn more about Horizon 2050. Again, it's a utilities strategic roadmap and how we plan to power the future, the community, not just today, but into the future. Again, please join CPS Energy from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. or 5:30 p.m. through 7:30 p.m. this Thursday. Again, your engagement, your participation will be crucial to the success of our current plans and our future plans. That concludes the chairman's remarks, and we're gonna go ahead and move to item number six, which is consent agenda. Item number six, approval of the consent agenda items is A, payment to the City of San Antonio for August 2024; B, minutes from the July regular board meeting held on July 29, 2024.
Moved to approve the consent agenda. That stated.
There was a first by Dr. Mackey, and then a second by Dr. Romero. Roll call.
Yes, ma'am. Chair Dr. Mackey? Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Now we're gonna move to item number seven on the regular agenda, and that is committee reports. A, Employee Benefit Oversight Committee, E B O C, meeting held on July 18, 2024. B, Audit and Finance Committee, A and F, meeting held on July 18, 2024. C, Operations Oversight Committee, meeting, O O C, meeting held on August 12, 2024. Any discussion on any of those? Okay. In lieu of reading the committee reports aloud, the following report is available in your book, board book, for review. And if the board doesn't have any questions or comments, the reports will be submitted as, will be accepted as submitted. I don't want to rush, so I just want to make sure, again, we're all good. Can I get a note for everybody? I'll go ahead and wait a little, couple of minutes. Everybody, there are no questions or comments, so again, the reports will be accepted as submitted. Will now move to agenda item number eight, which is procurement request for approval underground infrastructure installation services by Mr. Richard Medina.
Hi, good afternoon.
Okay, I was just waiting for them to pull up the procurement item. I thought the first one was underground services. Yeah, there it is. There we go. So, today, good afternoon, Chair trustees. Today, I'm going to be covering three procurement items. The first one is for Underground Infrastructure Services. So, what this is, is a contract, new contract. We rebid this contract. It's primarily focused on system growth. And so, what this is, is large underground duct banks where we're putting lines underground for civic projects, also for a lot of the text dot work, where we can't take overhead lines across the highways, so we bury them and install manholes and infrastructure. It also supports a lot of the downtown network areas where we're having to expand for all the growth downtown. And this contract will also enhance our reliability and resiliency. And so, there, shoot. Okay, this thing's fast. And there you can see on the right is a picture of our crews setting a manhole outside of a substation, because it also supports our substation growth. So, the current contract was a $48 million, three-year contract. It expires in November. The new contract is for $75 million, three years. We had 10 bidders responding to this. We're awarding to two vendors. Both of them are local and diverse companies. And at this time, I will ask for your vote.
Mr. Medina, did we talk about this Monday, last Monday?
Yes, sir.
We had a conference call on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the three things that I commented on? You remember? Is the lady here with supplies that was in the meeting?
She's not here.
Okay. You were there?
Yes, sir.
Have a vote? Oh, okay. Okay. I'm.
Is there a motion?
To approve the Underground Infrastructure Installation Services?
So moved approval for item 7A.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'm sorry. 8A.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second. Does the board, the board have further discussion before we vote?
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay, now you may speak, Dr. Mackey.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Medina?
Yes, sir.
We discussed this.
We can't hear you.
We discussed this, because last month, I didn't support this. And we discussed this, and what were some of the things that we discussed? Is the company here, Mr.? The company's, they're not here. We discussed this, and I share with you my concerns about going, you bid it out, you did everything right, that was no problem. I'm not concerned about this. But my concern is these companies coming here, we paying $75 million, even though it's in our budget, right?
Yes, sir.
It's within our budget. We paying $75 million for these companies, two companies, to get this work. It was rebid, it wasn't like we extended to be contracted. It was rebid. However, when I start looking at local and diverse, I do see small, but I don't see diverse, and we discussed that. You mean, in San Antonio, with all the construction that we have going on for small business, diversity, minorities, that they did not, that they can't get any work in this, and we paying $75 million? It's hard for me to push for this. I mean, I want to vote, support Mr. Gaza and CPS team, but it's hard. It's hard, because we don't have dump trucks, people that can get out there and dig, even though the company supply the materials, that we can't have companies do that? It's hard to support that. It's hard to, it's hard to support it. I'm asking Mr. Gaza, from now on, that, Mayor, I want to ask you a question. Does the city have anything in their policy that at least 25% or 10% go to minorities or small business or something like that? They have that in their policy? I'm just asking a question, I don't know.
Yeah, we have, so, we have a SEBETA program with aspirational goals for different segments of the contracting policy.
Okay.
All governed by statute. And we have data that supports progress towards the goals. I will say that CPS Energy, SAWs, all of our public agencies are now at the table through a supply assay initiative, so that we can hopefully all consider procurement and contracting within our community as an opportunity for small business development, exactly what you're saying, so that we can begin to utilize public dollars in a more strategic way to help not only get the job done well, but also to grow our small business community.
Absolutely. I support that, what you just said, ma'am. But I don't support us giving bids to these people, to these companies, and we don't implement this program. So, in our policy, when we redo our policy, Ms. Gonzalez, Chair, can you make sure that put this in the policy so we can vote on it? I appreciate that. The numbers, please.
Sure. And Dr. Mackey, as you and I have talked about, you know, completely supportive of doing everything in our power to expand our reach into the small business community, so you'll have our continued commitment that we're going to do our best efforts to maximize the use of local firms, you know, particularly in the small business community, you know, to the extent we can.
Oh, you said, you said you, I have the what?
You got my word, sir.
I got, I got your word?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have my word, because if it doesn't come through, I'm not going to support it. We have each other's word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion, Mr. Steen?
So, Mr. Medina, thank you for briefing me on these procurement items last week, and thank you for your willingness, in the spirit of transparency, to answer questions in this public setting, and you're a valuable member of CPS Energy's team. And this is slide three. I like that there was a robust response to the RFP, in that 10 companies submitted bids. To be clear, you're recommending two companies out of the 10, and propose to award each half of a three-year, $75 million contract.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, are we able to put up page four of eight? The way this was, the way you structured this in our materials, you actually had a section previous to this. Can we put up those pages, too?
The form, oh. The forms, can you pull up the?
Page 19, the deck.
Well, I'm looking at, it said page four of eight on it. Yes.
So, it's for trustees, it's, again, in the deck, page 19, for clarity.
I don't know if we, I don't know if we have that on the screen for the, this present, this.
So, it's not available?
It's in your trustee book.
Trustees have a copy of that, so we can continue.
Well, but, you know.
And we could always.
This, yeah, this is a public meeting. I think that's an oversight, in that if you have materials in the board booklet, you should be able to put it up on the screen. But, anyway, on that page four, you show the two companies you're recommending. And in terms of your evaluation, were they the highest scores?
Yes, sir.
And so, the.
Two top scores.
Okay, so, the two highest scores received respectively 62 and 59 out of 100. And forgive me, but I think I'm articulating what customers listening in must be thinking. 62 and 59 aren't exactly great grades, so please explain.
Yes, sir. So, there's a criteria that we look at, and each category has, you know, you can make the top points. Not every bidder has the ability to answer all the questions, so it varies. So, we kind of just score them relatively, it's a score, but it's relative. So, the two top scores, although it's 62, doesn't mean that they're unqualified, correct?
Well, what are they weak on if they're not getting 100?
I can, I don't have that with me. I can pull it, maybe a few minutes.
Okay, well, I'll go on.
I mean, we're part of those discussions. It could be anything from dollar size, it could be anything from, again, there's different criterias, and so, it could be anything from, depending how it was set up.
Experience, qualification.
Experience, past performance.
Pricing, there's a whole slew of things.
All right.
That's right.
It could be just based on capacity.
Mr. Medina, please, please explain why you believe the cost of the installation services has increased 53%.
Yes, we have more work coming. There's a lot more work. You see all the construction around town. There's a lot of work downtown, moving duct banks and manholes. We got a lot of work with TechStot on all the construction of the highways around towns. It's just, it's all relative to the work.
Well, and let me add, this board's been pushing us more and more to move towards rebidding projects. Rebidding doesn't mean a lower price. You know, in a lot of cases, rebidding means we're going to pay more, because everybody's costs have gone up 25 to 40%. So, the process of rebidding it in and of itself will likely end up in us paying more for those services.
All right. And then, on page three out of eight, or I guess that would be, which, in regard to the evaluation criteria, I note that overall cost is factored in as 20%, or only one-fifth of the total. And so, what you're thinking there, is that standard to give overall cost only 20 points in a weighted evaluation?
Yes, sir, on these type of contracts, yes.
And I appreciate you're probably reluctant to talk specifics, but cost-wise, we're all bidders kind of in the same ballpark?
Yeah, we can, we can provide you that information at a later date, but talking about cost of bidders themselves, or in a public forum, is probably not appropriate.
Just for context, for the bidders, they actually, if we are open-recorded for this information from the bidders, if they request, if someone were to request the ratings for all the bidders, we would actually work with our legal partners to notify those bidders. And in many cases, those bidders will actually file with the state to maintain the privacy of those records, and so, we don't put that into the public documentation. They consider that their competitive, their competitive information around what the pricing was that they submitted. So, we won't go into that in a public forum, but we certainly can brief you.
All right. And then, no specifics, but have you received any feedback from the bidders about the process?
From the bidders themselves?
Yes.
No.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions, Dr. Romero? Or statements? Sure.
I did just want to say, in regard to the scores being 62 and 59, I look at that from the other perspective, because I've been on committees for city grants and things where everybody got a 98 or a 99, and that's concerning as well. So, this tells me that you have a tough set of criteria, and that you are enforcing them in a thoughtful manner.
Thank you.
And just someone who bids on work, you are correctly such to state that providing financial information is covered by state law, and in order to do that, they have to put in a formal request, and so, I just want to echo that. But I do appreciate the thoughtful questions. I will tell you that, again, someone who responds to a good amount of RFPs, criterias are set by, again, different types of contracts, and so, here, where qualifications, always more pricing means, again, you're looking for experienced vendors over cost. I could be the cheapest and then not have the best quality of service, and what good does that do to our organization? So, I'm very mindful that we do have such strict standards when we're looking for vendors, and so, again, thank you for your due diligence on those criterias.
And Ms. Gonzalez, I appreciate your background with this. It does seem to me that when we're trying to be cost-conscious, I don't know how to put it, but that's a little bit weak, to say that the overall cost is only 20 points out of 100. That's just my opinion.
Again, sir, that's a straight, and so, there's just, again, best value versus lowest technically possible acceptance. And so, it just kind of goes back to the original statement of work. And so, as they continue to improve procurement policies and procedures, if we're looking for technically acceptable but at the lowest rate, that they would have stated that in the original proposal. So, all I would ask, and Mr. Steen makes a good point, is moving forward, if the criteria is, again, the most qualified at the most affordable rate, that that's baked in at the beginning. In this case, that was not the case. All Mr. Steen is asking is for us to be mindful to consider that in the future.
Yeah, when we put out the RFPs, we list the criteria, we don't share the weightings. But overall, experience and qualifications in the past, we want to make sure that we're getting good quality products out there, because at the end, we're having to go refix things if they're not done right. So, we have a heavy focus on the experience and quality.
I will just, I'll just add that every procurement is different, and when you're talking about commodities and materials, the pricing frequently has a higher weight in procurement and for materials specifically, because you're asking vendors to bid on all the same item. In the case of things particularly like construction, I can tell you, we dive into their safety records and ask them to submit that material. That's important to us. That's part of the qualification review process, and so, it's not always just about price. You can hire an inexpensive firm with a very poor safety record, and that's not something we want. So, that's why the variability, depending on the type of procurement we're talking about, and the qualification.
And as mentioned, I think Mr. Steen's just, again, stressing the fact that, you know, yes, we want qualified vendors, but we also want competitive pricing. And then, as Dr. Mackey stressed, it's great that we go through this really strict process, that we're asking, is it those who then bring small business to the table, that those organizations are utilized, and that we're just making sure there's accountability and it's transparent of who we award contracts to, to also ensure that they self-report their commitment to actual versus spend, and that we continue to, again, we understand that not all size fits all, that you will not be able to do that for all contracts. All we're asking is for all those things. Mr. Steen wants to make sure we get best value. Dr. Mackey wants to make sure utilization of small business and accountability. And then, of course, and I can't speak for Dr. Romero, the only thing that I'm asking for is that we take all those things into consideration and continue to improve our procurement process. And, again, thank you very much for that work. Mr. Steen?
Ms. Gonzalez, I hear, and you have the background in this, and I maybe hear you suggesting this, but if there was a way that we could, we could have, we could clear people on safety and experience and those sorts of things, and then get them more competing against each other, you know, qualified groups, on who's going to give us the best price?
And currently, Mr. Steen, there already are contract vehicles like that, like, for example, I believe, and I don't want to misspeak, but I believe the CPS accepts the DIR contract vehicle with the State of Texas, which is a Department of Information and Resource contract vehicle. The State of Texas makes you go through an extensive process. You get vetted as a supplier, and then you get awarded a contract schedule, so you have pre-negotiated rates with the State of Texas. But in addition to that, they do an extensive background check before you can do business with any public or state agency. And so, that's another example that CPS does utilize that vehicle as well to make sure that they've been pre-vetted. Another comment?
I just want to say something, because I'm feeling a little unsettled, because we're having a discussion, and that's fine. It almost seems like we're getting to the point where we're saying, we want you to increase the proportion that cost is considered when you do this. And I don't want to be having that discussion here, because that would be a policy discussion that we would have to agendize and have for another day, if we even have the authority to do that. So, that's, I just want to be clear, I'm not saying like, oh, yeah, I think we should start changing these metrics, because, no, not now.
Thank you, Dr. Romero. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then, can I go ahead and get a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am, we have a motion and a second to approve agenda item eight. Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Procurement item has passed, let's move on to the next item.
Okay, next item is for reclosers? Yeah, that's it. Okay, so, the next contract is a extension. This supports grid modernization and growth. Reclosers are the electronic switches that go on our system. There's a picture of one there on the right. How we describe this is kind of at a substation, like a breaker at a house, and then further down the line, we put additional breakers. This is like a mini breaker on the overhead system. And so, we break our overhead system into three or four, five sections. And so, what that allows is if there's a fault on the system, whether it's a car hit pole, or animal, or something that gets into the lines, it isolates within those sections. And so, it helps with reliability, it helps with speed, so that our system operators, I think in the past, Dr. Romero, you asked, hey, how did y'all get power on so quickly when that car hit the pole and took all the wires down? The system operators were. The system operators were able to open and close switches and reconfigure the power flows. Super important for us going forward for resiliency and reliability. This is also tied to the grant that we got from the Department of Energy. So we'll be getting $30 million from the Department of Energy to deploy different type of systems. So this, end of this year, we would be installing 20 re-closers for the grant. And then early next year, we'll be installing 100 re-closers for the grant. So as I mentioned, the current contract was for 28 million, it's four years. Back when we bid this contract out, we had eight respondents. This was the first contract where we kind of pooled both the engineering and construction altogether and bid it in one big packet. So Burns and McDonnell was awarded, is the prime, the sub was chain. They also put in the contract 40% local subcontracting commitment. We checked today, the subcontracting commitment right now, as a snapshot in time, is at 37%. By the end of the contract, it'll be at the 40%. It's just timing of paying bills. So we have that commitment from the contractor. And so we're looking at extending this contract another four years. So to date, they installed 460 re-closers on our system. We started this program a few years ago, and, you know, the turnkey piece, years ago, we were only able to install like 35 with internal resources, and we got this up to 150 re-closers per year. So tremendous job with the teams. And we're looking to extend this contract for another four years. So at this time, I'll seek your approval.
Move, approve.
And again, do you have a motion to approve this item?
Second.
There's a first and a second, the first was Dr. Mackey, and the second was Dr. Romero. Open for discussion or comment? We have some from, go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Go ahead, Dr. Romero.
You were first earlier, go ahead, Mr. Steen.
So I note that four years ago, in February of 2021, the contract was awarded to Burns and McDonnell Engineering Company. At that time, there were eight bidders for what turned out to be a $28.5 million contract. And now you're recommending extending the contract with the same company for another four years at a value of 35 million, which is a 23% increase. And my question is, why didn't you put this out to bid like you did four years ago?
So it took a little over a year just to get folks ramped up. And it's a lot of work to get, ramping up to these levels to do these type of devices. So it's not just, it's all the engineering work that goes behind studying the systems. They have expertise now with our systems. They have the flow of installing these re-closers on the system, commissioning them in the field, and getting them communicating back to our systems at the system operator's office. So they're doing a tremendous job, it just takes a long time to get a partnership like this together to do the, both the engineering and construction together.
Part of this is, oh, go ahead, Ms. Lewis.
I would just add to that, that the bulk of that is the labor for engineering costs in the time difference between 2021 and today. Their roughly 20% increase in engineering labor cost is consistent with our own view of cost increases for paying engineers. So their, their contract is consistent. I would not expect to get a different level of engineering at a lower cost from another provider, just for clarity.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I think we have more re-closers in the next four years to wrap up the program. Trying to wrap up our program.
And Mr. Garza may disagree with this, but what do you think? Don't you think that normally an RFP process results in CPS getting a better price?
Not necessarily, no, sir.
All right.
Like I said, our experience of late has been, these contracts go up when we do rebid. Doesn't mean we shouldn't rebid, but the board has to understand that our dollars go, you know, don't go as far when we go through the rebid process. In this case, not just for the reasons that Richard mentioned, but we also have a very high-profile, very sophisticated DOE grant that we're trying to get implemented that this particular contract supports. So we don't, you know, the timing of getting somebody else involved will set us back, I think, you know, to get a new contractor in place. Let's finish the project, then we'll rebid it for whatever work is to come, but I'm comfortable with where we are here.
Yeah, and Mr. Steen, part of the renewal, we look at the cost, and if it's not reasonable, we'll rebid it. And so at this case, it's reasonable, like Lisa mentioned.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
Mr. Medina, we discussed this, and and I think you're on top of this with the extended, extending the contract and the receiving a grant from the DOE. And re-closure, I guess you did a good job in explaining the re-closure for safety reasons. And rerouting the electricity when a pole or something is hit and going down. And engineering construction serves for this because of the grant. And the 40% of utilization is taken care of, we're down to 37%. So I have nothing to complain about.
Thank you.
I will say that last board meeting, there was two noes and two yes, and I want to thank the team that went back to each trustee who, if they had questions, and so I want to thank you for that, because, again, many of us don't take it lightly when people just want to extend contracts. I will say that this went through, it was vetted, and one of the reasons we're leaning towards, well, most of, I can't speak for everyone, at least I'm going to say yes, is primarily because it's tied to a DoD grant, DOE, and timing is everything. And we don't want, again, we ask for you to find opportunities with grants and then not to support it. But again, each case is different, and it may be the case again in the future where it should be rebid. For right now, you know, you've already stated your case of why. And then the board has had the opportunity for, to revisit and have discussion, and we're having this presentation. So I really sincerely appreciate, again, the level of transparency.
Thank you.
All right, on that, on that note, if we can go ahead and get roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you, if we can move to the final procurement item.
Okay, the final procurement item is, it's breakers for our transmission system. So we call them 362 KV breakers. They are on the larger, higher level voltage of the transmission system. And so those are the breakers, we'll be looking at extending the contract. On this one, there are supply chain constraints, the support system growth. Also, this is all TCOS recoverable, so I just want to add that. So these are breakers that go in the very large substations, like I mentioned, on the 345 lines. Primarily, what we're seeing is all the new requests from ERCOT to build bigger stations. These are going to support those projects. We also have a lot of projects where batteries providers and solar providers are connecting to the 345 system. So they all need breakers for all the lines going in and out of those substations. So we have a lot of need for these type of breakers. The lead time on these materials is four years, and so we have approximately 142 breakers needed for 17 projects. So we're having to place orders in advance just because of the lead time. And it's going to get worse. I mean, the more all these data centers are connecting, those lead times are going to change. So we're trying to get these in the queue so that they don't push further out. On this next slide shows the current contract was at 17 million, and it was for five years. And you can see there on the graph, in the past, we were only installing very few, 50, over the total contract. And now we're looking at tripling that. And so we're looking at this new contract, extending it for additional five years to cover those, while we're ordering all those breakers, that takes four years to order, at a value of 80 million. And so we're just extending this award. And so I'll be seeking your approval on this one.
Richard, talk a little bit about the type of breaker we're ordering and why Mitsubishi, you know, is the vendor, you know, in this particular instance. Because, you know, the part of the issue is, we create standards for our system on how we're going to build it to take advantage of efficiencies, you know, in the procurement process. But, you know, we chose this breaker specifically as a design standard, and Mitsubishi is the one that makes them. So, you know, if we're going to expand our, the diversity of our supplier base, we're going to have to change our standards. So talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so years ago, we used to buy different types of breakers, and we would bid out. And then what was happening is, then all the substations have different equipment. And it's very confusing to the techs that are going out there, and there's lots of wiring that goes inside breakers. And so we were trying to help staff so we can train and make things more efficient. And so we kind of landed on standardizing breakers with the three-phase gang operated, which, which just means you got the three phases, you see three wires down on the transmission system, they're all connected to one breaker. So if something happens, it works very efficiently to disconnect all three phases. And so we standardized on that, and that's what Rudy was talking about. We're also going to have to start looking, just because the lead times are getting further and further out there, to opening it up and figuring out how we include other vendors and other manufacturers with different types of designs. So we may, we're going to go back and take our teams and ask them to come up with a few different types of standards so that we can reduce risk in case there's any issues.
Ready? Okay, so procurement request for approval of 362 KV dead tank circuit breaker? Do I have a motion to approve the 362 KV dead tank circuit breaker?
With approval.
Do I have a second? Second by the mayor. Does the board have any further discussions before we vote? Mr. Steen?
So, Mr. Medina, my first question. The first two procurement items on today's agenda are the exact same items that were deferred from our last, from our last board meeting earlier this month on September 9th.
Yes, sir.
However, I believe this item's new?
Yes, this was slated to be on this board meeting, yes.
Right, so, so last meeting, we were to deal with transmission steel monopoles, but this meeting, it's the dead, dead tank circuit breakers. And so why the change? What happened to your request to extend a contract with Techline and Meyer Utility Structures for steel monopoles for $70 million? And I do note that the current contract with Techline and Meyer is not due to expire until August 31st, 2025. But again, why the deferral?
Yes, sir, so like I mentioned, a lot of the projects that we're seeing, both with ERCOT and all the, the other transmission interconnects require poles. On that one, we have more time, so we're going to go out and bid it. And look at some spot purchases on the existing contract, and then go out and bid that contract. And then we'll also look at, hey, what are the price differences on that? That was one we were going to look at, hey, renewing versus bidding and seeing the price differences on that.
Well, I appreciate that. So that was one where it was scheduled last meeting to be an extension, and now we're going to rebid it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that's great.
It's just another example where we can, Mr. Steen, that's been the ask, where we can, we will, where we can't, we can't. Where we need more information, the team has been very, again, forthcoming with providing additional support. But that's just an example where we were able to look, look to rebidding.
All right, and then, you know, somebody listening in might, might say, how did, and I don't want you to answer this question, because you're talking about, now we're down to where we just got one product that we use? So how did CPS put itself in a position that it can only buy from one supplier? And you think about that, is it, are we in a position where we have to pay whatever the supplier wants to charge?
No, sir, if, we have different types of breakers, we just try to standardize on one. So if, if, if there is an issue with pricing or getting these breakers, we will move to a different type of breaker and relax our standards, just like we did with all the transformers. When we were having issues getting transformers, we relaxed standards at that point to get the business done.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
I just missed any, please?
Yeah, sure.
You said relax our standards?
Yeah, so modify the standards a little bit, not really relax them, but to create safety issues or any issues, it's just modify standards. Sorry.
So, yeah, I'm a little troubled by this, because yeah, five years ago, in the summer of 2020, we did a solicitation and had four bidders. But, but we're not going out to bid on it now.
The other four bidders couldn't make the design. They said they weren't going to, they didn't want to make that design. It's a custom, it's a, they made independent, individual breakers. They just said, hey, well, we're going to bid, and if we take exceptions, we take exceptions. And at the time, we didn't take exceptions.
Let me just make sure I heard correctly. So the concern is not being hostage, or potentially be held hostage by one specific vendor because of the type of engineering that we designed. And that engineering was designed, that process was designed, again, to simplify and to improve the quality of the end product, if that's the best way to state it.
Yes, that's you.
Okay, and so I believe what I'm hearing from my colleagues is, and I think I heard you answer this already, here's where we're at today, and in the immediate future, if you've gone to your engineers internally and said, can't find ourselves here.
Right.
I need you to propose potential new solutions, innovative solutions, or in the future, we don't find ourselves potentially the risk, right? Mitigate the risk, but not being able to be tied to one supplier. But in the meantime, you're asking for our board's support to go ahead and approve this one, this particular procurement item. But as Mr. Steen stated, he's uncomfortable with Y1. But again, we don't want to reduce our standards, so we're going to stick with the current, the current standard with this option. But in the immediate future, you're looking to your internal team to see what other alternatives are out there to mitigate the risk in the future by not having only one particular battery in this case, is that correct?
That is correct. By the next time we bid this, we will have a slew of different types of standards for different types of breakers.
Yeah, and let me, let me add, we also weren't installing as many breakers a year as what we anticipated installing over the next five years. So, you know, we've seen an uptick in requests come through that we're trying to get ahead of to buy us some time to, you know, to change our engineering process up. So some of it is just the, you know, the requests that are coming in and the amount of activity we're going to have in building substations.
I believe Mr. Steen has one more statement.
I think we're locking ourselves into Ms. Shabut, help me with the name.
Ms. Abiji.
Ms. Abiji.
It's a hard one. For five years, $80 million. And so another approach would be, if they would allow us to do this, to make that a shorter term so we can look into it. Otherwise, you're talking about pushing.
The wait time is four years?
Yeah, and the reason, like, we're not doing that is because we have to order them under four years out. And so if we don't order them, all the breakers, whether you buy different.
This is a supply chain constraint.
Yes.
Okay, I think that, just to be clear. Again, I understand where Mr. Steen is coming from and his concern, and you're just stating, again, there's a supply chain constraint that it takes four years for that product to arrive. So in the meantime, in those four years, we're going to look to future solution so that we don't find ourselves, again, depending on one supplier for needs that we see, again, escalating in the future.
Yes, that's correct.
Questions by our colleagues?
I just wanted to clarify that we were briefed on this at the August 12th Operations Oversight Committee meeting.
Yes.
And again, I just wanted to give you the chance to talk about this. In that briefing, there was never any indication, and I don't think there is, that we are somehow being held up by Mitsubishi and that there are reasons why you're not, you would rather have a different product. I mean, you
That's, that's correct.
You're happy with this product, and you're happy with the price at this point.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And if I could just give an analogy, today, your three top cloud providers is either Microsoft, Amazon, or Google. And sometimes they're just as expensive, and there's not much of a price difference. And so software as a service or managed services at that area, you're almost, again, there's not a lot of options. But I want to, again, thank Richard and the team for, go ahead, Mackey.
Okay, you said, I'm looking here, and the three additional respondents were not recommended for award. And tell me about those, those three, do they have the same product or different product or the standards?
It's a different, different type of product.
Different type of product?
Yes, sir.
Is that, but they met our qualifications, all of them did?
We put out the bid requesting for the gang-operated three switches to operate together. And they just, they submitted individuals. And sometimes folks will do that on products. So if you're, if you don't get what you ask for, then you can settle for something different.
And he stressed that it was a custom design, and so those firms, you get to meet those recs, we call them recs, requirements. And they could not, they wanted us to take exceptions and go to an alternative solution. But that's not the way the, again, the request for a proposal, the scope of work is written.
Correct, yes.
I think everybody has, again, asked questions, provided comments. So thank you, colleagues. If I can go ahead and take roll call?
Trustee Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Trustee Steen?
Yes.
Mayor? Vice Chair?
Yes.
Chair? Motion carries?
Yes, motion carries.
Just to make a comment, I think this, this is a good exercise that we went through. went through. I think we asked some questions. I think our customers would be pleased that we're looking into this. And it, it seems like, should we be spending time on this? But we just approved a hundred and eighty-four million dollars worth of, of, of procurement. And so, and sometimes, we've got on the consent agenda multiples in terms of dollars on that. So I think, I think it's a healthy process.
No, I agree. And I, I couldn't stress again, that at least individually, each board member has really stated the importance of transparency and not just voting to just vote. Again, thank you, all colleagues, for not just voting to just vote, to, to ask the tough questions, and making sure that we collectively improve how we award contracts, and the accountability, and the transparency portion of it. Because this board is engaged, and we will ask follow-up questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and move to item number 11, which is executive session. Oh, no, sorry. Sorry, sorry.
You're not ahead.
Again, take us into board, take the board into executive session.
At this time, the board is going to recess into an executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action on competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene in open session, continue the meeting. It's 2:11 as we go into executive session.
Executive session, Ms. Ramirez, please bring back the board from executive session.
Yes, ma'am, it is 2:51. PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that only one vote was taken on the posted items, and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum, and all members are present.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. We'll now move to agenda item number 12, annual STEP update program year two by Ms. Elena Ball. Ms. Ball, can you please proceed?
Yes, good afternoon. So, to get started today, we have four items relative to our STEP program that we're going to review. First is just an overview of the program. We'll discuss program year performance. We'll discuss some year-two highlights, and then discuss programs that we've got on the horizon. So today, our objective is to provide you all with an overview and highlights for year two. So just to remind everyone who's watching, you know, our STEP program is the Sustainable Tomorrow Energy Plan, and it's really a program designed to reduce our community's demand for energy. We have a five-year reduction of 410 megawatts targeted, and we're also designing programs to help with equity and to help customers save energy and money, and in particular, those customers who need the help the most. Some of the short-term benefits of STEP are that it lowers customers' energy usage and their monthly bill. Incentives help reduce upfront costs for customers in various programs, and it helps CPS synergy by reducing overall system fuel costs and creates savings that benefit all customers. Longer term, as we're all faced with the blessing of having a growing community, by saving both demand and energy, it helps us delay and lessen the need for additional generation capacity in the future by reducing our load growth. It also minimizes corresponding rate increases and helps us reduce the need for and the amount of rate increases to support the cost of new generation in our growing system. STEP also provides environmental benefits from reduced emissions associated with reductions in energy efficiency and less efficient energy sources during periods of high demand. You know, we've done a lot of benchmarking on our programs, and we have a call out here that it costs us twice as much to procure energy as it does for us to invest in saving energy. That certainly depends on each program individually, but in aggregate, as we look at all of our programs, that's what we're observing. So to remind everyone who's watching and to share with the board, this five-year program that we have took effect on August 1st, 2022. And I think this is important to highlight. Our program year for STEP is different than our fiscal year. And so you will see reports online that are aligned to our fiscal year, but recognize that our STEP program begins August 1st and runs for 12 months to the end of July of the following year. So for the five-year program, we have goals around demand management. As I mentioned, we're seeking to put 410 megawatts of incremental demand reduction in place with these programs. We're targeting a 1% energy savings overall per year. And when we look at our weatherization program, we have both single-family homes and multifamily homes. We're looking at weatherizing 16,000 homes for individual residential homes and 20,000 multifamily units. We just began our multifamily program this past week. We're seeking, through these programs, a $665 million avoided fuel and capacity costs across the lifetime of the programs. And it's estimated that we will reduce 1.85 million tons of avoided carbon as a result of the combined efforts over this five-year program. As a reminder, we have an approximate $350 million budget for these five years and these programs. So where are we, as of 7/31/24, which is the completion of program year two? From a demand savings perspective, we are sitting at 216 megawatts of total demand reduction. And you can see a bar chart to the right that speaks to program year one and program year two and where those savings are coming from. We also have achieved over 609,000 megawatt-hours of energy savings. We've reached almost 4,000 single-family homes that have been weatherized, and our spend to date is at 143 million. So some call-outs here. The main difference in savings that we've observed between program year one and two largely is attributed to solar. We did sunset our traditional solar rebates in December of 2022, but in support of our focus on community equity, we extended solar rebates to support customers who traditionally face barriers to participation, such as small businesses with systems less than 100 KW, schools and nonprofits. And we believe, as we're in the final steps of evaluating our community's solar offering, that that will help support LMI customers and other residential customers who face common barriers such as homeownership, roof integrity, electrical system issues, and a number of other areas, including the ability to finance their own rooftop systems. So as of August, we've interconnected 2,300 systems. And as anticipated, we have seen demand level off, but we are continuing to see interest in rooftop solar. We're very supportive of that. Interest rates are the primary barrier that we've been hearing from our solar developer community that are quelling some of the installation of rooftop solar. The increase in energy efficiency has been attributed to our new free HVAC tune-up program. And weatherization is trending lower than expected. We're at about 25% of our weatherization goal compared to where we are in the program. We are going to be making adjustments and briefing the board at upcoming committee meetings on adjustments that we're going to make to increase performance in weatherization. There also was a slight decline in demand response compared to program year one. And the primary driver for that, we had two very large, commercial and industrial loads that almost exclusively were tied to that reduction in performance. And it just had to do with where they were and some operational matters that were occurring at their facility. Last summer was the hottest on record. We called 39 demand-response events, breaking the 2022 record of 27 events. And overall, for our performance, we monitor something called UCT. It's also called PACT. These are acronyms defined in the appendix. But essentially, there are measures that look at how much net present value of energy and demand savings did the utility and our customers achieve, divided by what were the costs associated with offering those programs. And so for fiscal year '23, we were at about a 4.51 UCT, and we were at 3.3 for fiscal year '24. And again, recognize the program year has not gone through the full M&amp;V, so you will get both program year and fiscal year results. But essentially, if you want to think about this, for every dollar we're spending in the program, we're getting more than $3 in benefit.
Elena, before you move on, go back real quick, before it gets called out for not being in the glossary. NCP, can you explain the graph, please?
Yes, sir. And that was a miss on our part for not including NCP. So we have... Okay, the non-coincident peak. Okay. Sure. We look at savings both when our system is peaking, when it's at its highest demand usage, and we also look at when ERCOT is peaking. And so you'll see something called coincident peak. And that's essentially, at those very high-demand times, what is the peak on our system. Non-coincident peak are when is our system peaking at other times of the year. So it's just about looking at the four coincident peaks that occur June, July, August, and September in ERCOT, and what's occurring on our system. So the team, and I'm up here presenting all of this great information, but it's important that the board understands that we have a really terrific team who manages this program day in and day out. Many of the team members reside on my team under Jonathan Thierrina, but also on Deanna's team under KJ Federer. And we have team members across the organization that help. So while I'm getting the pleasure of speaking to you all, I want you to understand I'm just the spokesperson here. The real work goes on across the organization. One of the areas that the team has been focusing on is helping reach hard-to-reach customers. You know, as we look at energy burden, as we look at customers who are struggling to pay their energy bills, we wanted to be very targeted on how we market and reach those customers. And so you'll see some of the objectives that we laid out with the new STEP program. We want to make sure that our customer understands and how important energy efficiency is and that these programs are designed to help our community with their savings, whether it's in their home or their business. We additionally wanted to make sure that we had data-driven campaigns where we could focus on the markets we're seeking to reach and identify how we're reaching those audiences, both in the makeup of those contacts, as well as are those turning into conversions? Where, you know, we've reached out, we've had a touch point, or there's turning into true engagements where we're able to see customers saving energy? And we also wanted to make sure that, you know, our platforms were easy to use. You know, we wanted to... We've got a lot of point-of-sale marketing and outreach at various retail providers in our community, but we also wanted to have a digital experience that engages our tech-savvy customers and connects these programs to our overall community goals of sustainability and energy. So again, we're just trying to increase participation, target underserved folks, and make sure that we're empowering them to take action. We want to make sure that the marketing is focused on, you know, who we are in San Antonio, who makes up our community. And then, really important, and I think we've always done a good job, but we're continually looking at ways that we can make sure our programs are available in a multilingual manner. We've also enhanced engagement through segmentation. Deanna's team has really been helpful in segmentation, and we want to make sure that when we're reaching out to customers, it's resonating so that they can pick up the content we're preparing and really getting those opportunities to drive energy usage out of their home or business. We're very blessed today to have our measurement and verification, validation suppliers in the audience. And so a big part of what we do is, you know, we set out programs. We have targeted objectives with those campaigns. We're looking to ensure we get those megawatt-hours and those megawatts. And we have a suite of suppliers, some of whom work for the PUC team, work all across Texas, who come behind us and make sure that we're getting the analysis to confirm the savings and that we're optimizing and continually redesigning and retooling our programs. Moving on to Slide seven, this is just an infographic. I'm not going to read all of these things to you all, but these are really the measures associated with this marketing strategy. Where are we reaching? You know, email is a common platform, our social impressions, website activity, and then ultimately, you know, impact. You know, we've reached over 15,000 households. We've reached over 2,000 businesses with programs. And, you know, we're giving out the rebates. Customers are getting the direct benefit. This is a slide that was requested by the board, and an area that we're constantly looking at our metrics around, which is what is the STEP participation by city council district? And so you'll notice this graph lays out essentially what are the STEP participation by San Antonio City Council District. A couple of things here, as, you know, we're actually very proud. We've seen over time a significant increase in new home construction rebates in D2, D3, and D4. And we intentionally targeted, you know, specific programs. We're making sure that we're reaching out to Habitat for Humanity. That's one of our point-of-sale locations and offers for rebates, as well as Dollar Tree and a number of other retail outlets. And that's really helped drive these numbers up. The majority of these stores are in these higher uptake communities. And some of the districts that have fewer have just fewer of these stores. So we're going to continually challenge ourselves to identifying good places where we can meet our customers, offer rebates, and get more and more participation in STEP. So moving on to demand-response. You know, we're really proud that our demand-response program, it's been in place for, you know, more than a decade. We have team members who have been longstanding program evangelists. We have over 500,000 residential customers participating in some manner in our demand-response programs. Some are direct through thermostat programs, and some are through behavioral programs. We're proud to say we have more demand-response customers than any other utility in the state of Texas. And what that does for us is, when we need capacity, when the system's getting tight, you know, we have options in front of us. We always look to optimize the system to try to drive energy and demand use out. We fire up generators that we need. But one of the key resources we have is this program where we can call on customers to help during high-demand or extreme weather conditions or conditions where the grid is just experiencing stress. And customers work with us. And we've got over 250 megawatts of capacity in demand-response. Our terrific team members in Bennie's organization and our energy marketing teams, they look at this as a resource. They're calling upon it in their daily planning, just like they would any other generation resource. And it's a real value, a testament to our customers should participate. But when we lower our demand, we reduce emissions, we reduce costs overall on the system, and that benefits all customers. We did introduce some new demand-response programs this year. We noticed this year that it used to be really simple. It's never been simple, but for us, it used to be fairly simple. We would see, you know, our hottest days and our highest demand periods as when we really needed demand-response the most. But we've been seeing pricing and other conditions emerge after sunset. And I'll show a graph here in a minute that speaks to that. And so we did, through the creativity of the team, we stood up a new winter demand-response program. We'd never had one of those before. And we started bonus hours, which were essentially calling on customers past what we normally had. And we've stood up a My Battery program, leveraging battery technology that customers may have already invested in and worked with customers to see how we can leverage those systems. These are pilots. We're not ready to go full-scale. But we're really continuing to look at this as an ecosystem and find ways our customers can save, or all of our customers can, and that we can reward customers for helping us during tight windows. These are some testimonies. They're in your material. I'm not a person who likes to toot our own horn too much, you know, but we do have a lot of really great comments back from our customers. We've got a video we're going to show here at the conclusion of the remarks, just to folks, customers, and suppliers who are engaged in the various STEP programs. But it's really very rewarding to see, you know, the support we're getting. We have, you know, a church. We have, um, you know, a church, um, who took advantage of our free tune-up program. We love those kind of programs because they, they help our customers save energy. And they, they, that in turn helps reduce the demand that we have to have on the system. Haven for Hope, you know, that's, that's actually one of the, um, nonprofits that center to our United Way campaign. And I know many of you are very familiar with that wonderful organization. They've been great partners in demand response. And, um, you know, over the past six years, their participation is, has, um, earned them more than $200,000 in rebates. And that goes, and that goes to help in so many ways, right? It helps directly on the system, helps their budget. It's helping their HVAC systems. But ultimately, when their budget is benefited, that goes to help so many in need in our community who are benefited by the, the services of Haven for Hope. And Power Players, you know, I mentioned earlier that there's over 500,000 residential customers involved in demand response in some manner. Good portion, over 300,000 of those are in the Power Players, um, uh, program. And essentially, this is just signing up for email and alerts to say, you know, to say, hey, uh, we, you know, what's going on in the system? Create a little friendly competition maybe between your neighbors. And they're simple things that we can all do, you know? On average, um, our homes, uh, 13% of our energy use is just, you know, doing laundry. Uh, you know, running your, running, doing certain activities in your home. And if you can push those things outside that window, it's, it's essentially free. Uh, it's just you making a behavioral change. And, um, we've got a really, we, we had a really good, um, response and, and performance of that program, and it's super low-tech. Mentioned this earlier, just, this is sort of the graphic that talks about the bonus hours and the My Battery rewards. And, and just for more color on those, we're going to continue to be shaping our system, both in the resources that we may procure, um, uh, build, construct, and certainly on the demand side, um, ways that we can work with our customers to move and make our system more agile. As I mentioned, um, you know, in the summer, we're getting, you know, thousands of gigawatts, as many as 20,000 megawatts of, um, of, of, uh, solar systems all throughout the state. And solar is extremely predictable when it's going to go away, right? We know when the sun sets. And what we found over the last two, several summers, but certainly more pronounced this past summer, as the sun would set, um, we would see, you know, less production on the solar generation side and need to quickly ramp up resources or address that, that shortage that's created. Because at home and in our businesses, the heat envelope was still in play. And so, um, we do see demand response as part of the suite of products that we're going to need as the, as the grid shifts and changes to ensure that we're reliable and that we can control energy costs for our customers. I'm almost completed with my remarks. But, um, you know, one thing that we, we've heard as we worked through, um, standing up the, the, the STEP program for the next five years, we heard a lot of feedback from our customers, from our community, that, you know, we really want to make sure that we're not creating barriers or we're addressing barriers that could reduce, um, folks' ability to access these programs. One thing that we're so appreciative of and proud of is something called our RAP program. It's the Weatherization Repair Assistance Program. We've received over $2 million in funds this year. And what these funds do for us, you know, prior to getting these funds, homes that, uh, you know, weatherization is an, is an income, um, guided program. And so we, we may have customers who, based on their income, qualify for the program, but upon further inspection of their homes, they may have repairs or things that would need to be addressed before they could be an eligible candidate for getting the weatherization work. And so these funds, um, and, and we received, you know, the funds from, from different sources. And so neighborhood housing certainly has helped with a million. Our Congressman Castro helped secure another million. And then we've had a number of donations, um, that have, have really helped. And what this does is it, it, it helps to bridge those barriers of, of homeowners who are, are eligible for weatherization, but, um, you know, needed some additional help, which isn't traditionally something a utility, an electric utility can provide. And so the impacts of the RAP program, um, through July are that we, we had 360 homes who were, had these minor repairs conducted, about a little over $1,200 a home. And in total, about 445,000 in repairs. But most importantly, what that allowed us to do is get them into the weatherization, um, uh, queue so that we can get energy efficiency, uh, measures in their homes that can create lasting savings for the customers and help, can help energy and demand be driven out of our overall system. Um, I mentioned earlier the multifamily program. There's a, there's a terrific team who's been developing this program in Jonathan Theherina's area. Anna Lozano's been leading this effort. And they've done a terrific job of really looking at, how can we expand the benefits of weatherization to multifamily customers who can't participate in our single-family weatherization program? And so last week, um, we had our, our very first piloted community of about 44 units. And as, as you would, as we expected, you know, we, we learned some things and there's, there's going to be improvements. We're going to continually roll into, to, um, to the program. But our intent is to reach customers and, and meet them in the space they need to help us save energy, help them save energy, and create, you know, a win-win for the community. And so then I'll, I'll wrap with programs on the horizon. You know, as I mentioned, multifamily is a program that the team is launching. Community Solar, we're in the final stages of, um, selecting, uh, additional community solar. And as I mentioned, that's terrific for customers who are eager to go, um, you know, to, to have solar as part of their energy profile, but they don't own their home, so they don't have a roof or rooftop. We've got a, a number of retail products we're expanding. And then, um, you know, really going to be doubling down on small business to try to help get, um, more small business enrolled in demand response where it makes sense for their business. There's several program enhancements that are going on. You know, um, we're always soliciting, um, feedback on both our residential and commercial energy efficiency programs. We're looking at, um, standing up an online marketplace where customers can, can actually self-serve. And then, um, you know, always continuing to look at program enhancements around our single-family weatherization. We're looking to address some of the underlying causes that has resulted in us not being at where we want to be right now and, and rolling those into future program, um, enhancements and designs. And then sort of out in the future, um, you know, we're continuing to, to update and, and to, and, and deliver, um, not only on our home energy assessments, but for customers, for all of us. You know, what are our home energy reports look like? You know, are there, can we help our customers understand, based on their energy use and, and other information? You know, places that they could look, whether rebates or just behavioral to save energy and save money. Battery energy storage systems are becoming much more prevalent. We're seeing a lot more interest by, um, customers to have, um, distributed energy resources, and batteries in particular. So we want to be responsive to finding ways that we can help with that technology and continuing to improve our behavioral energy programs. And, and looking at low and moderate-income solar rebates and other solar programs, um, similar to, you know, what we're looking at with community solar. So with that, I'll, um, conclude my remarks. And I have mu- many more, uh, much smarter people in the audience than me. So I have some really intelligent folks here. If you guys stump me with questions, I've got a, a deep bench of, of folks who've been in these programs and know them far better than even I. And, uh, we, we welcome questions and feedback.
Well, thank you, Elena. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for comments, and I believe we're going to start with Dr. Romero.
Thank you for this. Um, this is so exciting. Um, you, you used the word behavioral, which I think you were referring to demand response, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, where people voluntarily, okay. The word behavioral just sounds a little frightening. I think people might think, oh, my God, what are they doing to make me lower my thermostat? Okay, you meant, okay. I think you said that weatherization was not quite keeping pace with your expectations. And I'm sorry if you said this, but what's, what's the major reason for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, you know, I mentioned the, first and foremost, I will, I will tell you, you know, we, we have, um, we had fundamentally redesigned kind of how we approached weatherization a few, a couple of years back. And we've seen some real benefits to that. We've seen some challenges. And so, you know, our production, just how much, how many homes we can get to has slowed. Supply chain impacts has actually caused, um, our costs to go up. So, um, those are a couple of just drivers that are going on. I will also say, um, you know, those small repairs, you know, having, having homes that, um, are technically, they're income-qualified, but getting in and doing, looking at the homes and then finding that we couldn't serve them because of those small, um, repairs that need to be done, that's going to help as well. But I will tell you, you know, we've had, we've had, um, without going into anything terribly specific, but we have had some supply challenges. And, um, that has reduced the suppliers that we have doing some installation. And, um, the teams are working right now on plans to make adjustments to that.
Okay, and then, um, can you just go back over some of the things that people can buy and get rebates for?
Right.
What would, what would be examples?
Yeah, and, and I, I, um, you know, some of the things that we have, and you can go on our website, there's a STEP website where all of the information is there. And of course, we're available. You can reach out to us. But, you know, we offer new construction rebates. We offer existing home rebates. Things like, um, uh, you know, smart thermostats are, are certainly one. We have a number of home upgrades, right? Um, insulation. I mentioned the home energy audits. That's, those are free. That's actually a great place to start so that you can kind of find out what, what other, you know, what are the things you might be able to subscribe to. There's a list on, I don't know, a dozen or so that are kind of categories. Yeah, and so, um, but it is all on our, on our rebate, um, our, our STEP webpage. And there's a, you know, a lot of, of different, um, places that you can, you know, you can get savings. And, you know, the, the HVAC tune-up doesn't sound real, you know, exciting, but, um, HVA usage in, in a, in a, in a, uh, utility with, um, that peaks in the summer, I mean, we, it's a significant amount of your energy use. So HVAC, uh, C tune-in, tune-up is a, is a really great program that can see, you can see savings immediately.
Thank you. And, and I had my own home energy audit, so I talk about that a lot, and it was wonderful. And I think I'm still saving money from that. Just, um, two last things, just weird ideas from me. But I loved how you talked about this as an ecosystem, and it was, it was really helpful. I just wanted to bring in literal ecosystem for a minute. With the community solar, I know that some cities are focusing on biodiversity efforts in the solar farms. And I hope that's something, maybe we can partner with some groups, like the Native Plant Society or something like that, because it's just amazing what they're doing, uh, in, in those areas. And, um, if anybody's ever interested in this topic in San Antonio, the ending clo- well, ending the ban on clotheslines that so many HOAs have is also a movement around the country. Not that I don't respect the HOA rules. But if people were allowed to have clotheslines, it would make a big difference.
So you should live in District 5. We still have them. I, I just wanted you to know I'm selling my house, and that was exactly one of the selling points, having that.
And you can actually have alternative ones that don't look like a clothesline.
Um, I did have a couple of things, and I believe the last person to speak on this topic is going to be Mr. Steen. I just want to be again, uh, you stated that the fiscal year for year two really is August 2024? Is that correct, through July 2025?
So, yes, yeah, so the program year for STEP, um, STEP started August 1 of, um, it started in August 1. Our fiscal year typically runs, um, you know, February to the end of January. So there's, you'll see our, um, and, and, you know, we've had some speakers that talk about reports online. Those are tied to our fiscal year. And so the numbers may not perfectly match because the program year is different than our fiscal year.
That was the reason why I was asking, because I was looking at the 4.5 and the 3.2. I, I still think that we have an opportunity there. So just went at that point for clarification. The other thing I was going to ask, and I'm going to go to page, it's the chart for eight. And I think I heard you state the following. On District 3 and 4, there's been, um, assistance in working with, uh, Habitat, you said it was Habitat? Or there's just been more growth in 3 and 4? And that's potentially why they're at 20K versus District 5 at 3K?
Yes.
Is that what I heard correctly?
That's an, yes.
That due to economic growth, there's probably a reason. The more, more housing stock, more, you know, commercial growth, whereas someone in District 5, I mean, I, I understand District 6 is one of the fastest-growing areas. Uh, obviously District 4 seen a resurgence primarily on Southeast Military Drive. 3, um, I was a little surprised to see 3 so high. But really, like, areas like District 5 is where we need a lot of this. And so is it a lack of affordable housing stock? Is it because primarily the homes, like you mentioned, this is where the program RAP comes in? Where many of the homes don't qualify due to, uh, again, not meeting, quote, compliance?
Yeah, so.
And the lack of economic development?
Yeah, really, really great question, and you're hitting on a lot of the themes. So, um, you know, Districts 2, 3, and 4s have had a significant increase in new home construction rates. And so due to the geography of, of D5, we haven't seen the same growth. However, in D5, we see, um, the highest participation in weatherization from D5. And I believe, and, and the team needs to fact-check me on this, but I believe while the num- the numbers are lower in D5, our average spending in D5 per customer is roughly twice that of the other districts? Okay, all right. See, they're teaching me very well. Very smart team members. But you, you are correct. And then, and then another important thing, our targeted retail program, um, is there, there just are more retailers in some districts than others.
No, I know. I live in District 5.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we have the typical stuff. It's either pawn shop, a panaderia, or somewhere for a cell phone, but you don't see much of a difference.
So the retail providers, and we're going to continue to look for ways to expand, but, but because of that, like, if you look at, uh, D3, 4, and 6, we, we have 43 retailers in those areas with our programs. In D5, we have three stores. And so that's, it's a, it's, it's not one specific answer, but it's, um, those are some of the.
Right, I was just curious, maybe potentially, uh, reaching out to like the school districts, uh, which is, uh, like Edgewood, there's SEISD, and potentially even some of the nonprofits. I, I know the HOAs are pretty active, but maybe like the grandparents, there's a grandparent nonprofit. I think that's really making a big difference in that area. And so they typically are the ones that need the most assistance. This might be a good way to, uh, team up with CBOs, community-based organizations, to maybe introduce outside of the weatherization program, some like the thermostats, for example.
Thank, thank you for those, um, that feedback and those suggestions.
No, I, I think that's pretty much it. I, um, I commend all the efforts, and this is just another tool. And thank you to all the team members that are out there. And I believe we're going to conclude with Mr. Steen. Mr. Steen?
Thank you, Chair Gonzalez. I appreciate Chief Strategy Officer's, Elaine, Elena Ball's well-done update. And, uh, my comments on this topic will be succinct, but there's a thread that connects them with my previous remarks today, challenging management to make sure that every day, for the sake of our customers, we're working to keep CPS Energy costs down, as well as my remarks in regard to the, the agenda item that follows this one about CPS Energy's indebtedness. I stress that I'm not opposed to all major expenditures. For example, I concur that it's necessary to replace our current complex ERS system, the software system that we use to manage day-to-day operations, such as accounting, procurement, project management, risk management, compliance, supply chain operations, and so on. It's nearly a quarter of a century old, and our vendors have told us they'll see supporting it in 2027. So I agree, we must step up to the plate and complete this transition in the next three years at a cost of around $304 million. And I think that Chief Information Officer Evan Mahoney is doing an outstanding job overseeing this important endeavor. Did I get the amount right? Okay. On the other hand, there's a STEP program. In May of 2022, CPS Energy had the opportunity to ease the financial pressure on itself and its customers by, at a minimum, pausing this energy efficiency and conservation initiative called STEP, which was originally a 10-year program that predated my service on the board and that staff announced had reached its goals in 2020. Because this STEP charge, or what some have been dubbed the STEP tax, represented an average of 3% to 4.5% of a customer's bill, suspending the program would have, for many customers, essentially negated the 3.85% rate increase implemented March 1st, 2022. And granted, there, there'd have been a lag, but this would have happened. Nevertheless, it was decided to plow ahead with STEP, notwithstanding that I, as well as a plurality of GRAC members and three city council members favored a pause. The cost of extending the program was pegged at $70 million a year for five years. The cost of extending the program was pegged at $70 million a year for five years, or $350 million. This is on top of the $800 million CPS Energy had already spent on the program. Unbelievably, CPS Energy is now on track to spend a billion dollars on STEP. Again, I thank Ms. Ball for the presentation, but I differ with her in regard to the overall benefits of the STEP program. And please put up Slide 3. And I just want to focus at the statement in the blue rectangle at the bottom of the page, and just quoting it, "It costs twice as much to procure energy as it does to invest in saving energy." But I think there's a fallacy in that assertion, and I think, thinking as a businessperson, if CPS Energy had invested a billion dollars in a power plant instead of STEP, today, we'd have that generating unit as an asset on our books, an asset with a long life capable of producing substantial revenue. So Ms. Ramirez, I respectfully request that you note in the minutes my ongoing opposition to extending the STEP program beyond its original 10 years, as this board did over my objection in May of 2022. And thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman. So I, I hate to sound like a broken record also, but we do have to correct the record. The RAC did not, there was not a plurality to pause the program. There was a plurality to continue the program, there was a difference of opinion of how large the program should be, but clearly, the majority of, of the RAC wanted some type of STEP program to continue. Without belaboring the merits of this program, I do want to go back to the slide that showed the districts.
Yeah, I think it was Slide 8.
So this tells me that we're getting high degree of variability in the types of programs that are part of STEP in each of the districts. Could you tell, could you give me a summary of what that looks like, Elena? I, I see 20,000 STEP participants in District 3, only 5, only 3K in District 5. So what's in those numbers?
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask the team to come up and help me with numbers. The higher, the higher, you kind of see, there, there are three districts with markedly higher numbers. Those are in high-construction areas, so those new construction rebates that we're, we're offering are being uptake, there's a higher uptake in those, in those areas. And additionally, as I mentioned in the, the stores, the points of sale, if you will, or the points of rebate, there's just more there. But I, I'm going to invite the team to come up, and if you want to add additional color to the.
Elena, how about we do this? Why don't we show a breakdown by program, per district, and then for the quadrants as well?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll follow that up with the.
Yeah, I think that would be excellent. Feudal mind, Mayor.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I don't need it all now, but I guess, a couple of things. I think especially for city council, they would appreciate seeing the different program breakdowns on a map, on a heat map, also in the unincorporated areas, so we can see, again, there's a lot of effort going into equity, particularly in the types of programs in, in different parts of town. What I, what I would suggest is, you know, if, if we have 3K participants and, and there's a, you know, thousands of homes on the west side that are getting weatherized, that is an enormous ROI for not only the family, but also for CPS. We do know in those districts, in, in particular District 5, we're going to have the highest number of housing that needs to be repaired. And so the other ask is, again, I always bring this up when we're talking about the weatherization programs, again, are we getting some efficiencies with the City of San Antonio in terms of the home repair programs? Are we making sure that, you know, we're perhaps accelerating applicants to, or, I'm sorry, not accelerating, are we directing applicants for the weatherization program that need additional repair on the homes to our City of San Antonio repair programs so that we can get all those, those homes updated? And, and again, I understand and I agree, the assets are important, but we're a publicly-owned utility. The homes in our community are assets as well. And so if we can direct some of our resources to improving, you know, the livability of homes, and also the cost of energy in those homes, it's not just a benefit to, in many cases, the most vulnerable members of our community, but it's also a benefit to CPS, better energy response, you know, again, lower energy costs for, for all of us on aggregate, but most certainly for residents who would otherwise need, perhaps need some assistance in other areas from, from CPS and for the city. So I applaud this program. I think it would be helpful to see a little bit more granularity in the, in the, the metrics.
We will, we, we have that information and can provide that, we will provide that. And then, Chair Gonzalez, we do have a short video, if you will, would indulge us.
Absolutely.
We have a few testimonials from our different participants and stakeholders in the process, so I'll ask if Board Relations can cue that. Thank you. Thank you.
We started working with Casa Verde in 2010, and we're still working at the present time. I love this job because it helps the community. This is a program that's been so successful. We have so many customers, they're so happy, they can see the difference as soon as we finish their job. It is something that is efficient for their home, it helps them, and you feel the difference in your home immediately. What we do is that we do insulation in the attics and the walls and the floors, and now they have a new one that people can actually get their stoves, and that really has helped a lot. We have people that have cried when we install their stoves because it really helps them. This is a great program, and we are so happy to be a part of it.
What does CPS Energy do for you here in your home?
Okay, first of all, they do their attic insulation, and they check every single corner of the house, everything related to air leaks and, and, and they pressurize the house to see how it's working with the energy. And perfect service. Okay, like, I think I save like $1,000 easy a year, just in, in energy bill.
What else does that money help you with?
In different ways, and there's different ways we can use it for gasoline, for medication, for food, for another kind of.
When Haven for Hope signed up for the demand-response program, we knew that it would not only provide us savings for when our units are not running as hard during that demand-response time, but also receiving the incentive checks is huge for us because over the past six years, we've received about $200,000 back in rebate checks from CPS. We're able to put that money back into our operating budget to provide services to 1,700 clients per day.
I think STEP is a great program. I think it's a program that has really helped my business be able to even start a business and to grow off of it, and to also be able to bring value to customers too, that other utility companies make it very difficult to participate in rebate programs. And CPS has done a really great job of streamlining the ability for anybody to basically get rebate for any KW saved, which is really cool. It's kind of like the gift that keeps on giving. CPS actually funds your first step, so it's kind of like you're funding your first step into the program to allow the customer to keep using that energy savings to do more energy improvement projects within their buildings.
Demand-response is a small sacrifice to make, and I think if everyone does their part, we can really extend the, the energy that is available in our community, and it provides a great savings, so why not do it?
Okay. Well, again, thank you very much for the presentation. That concludes our conversation on the annual STEP update for Program Year 2. We're now going to go ahead and move to item number 13, which is FY 2025 Second Quarter Performance Update by Mr. Corey, I'm sorry, I'm going to say Corey K. And Ms. Elena Ball, thank you.
Corey K. works. Thank you, Chair. Well, good afternoon. As Chair alluded to, this will be a shared presentation, as we have in the previous quarter with Elena. I will first touch on our financial performance, and then Elena will move on to the, recap the enterprise scorecard. So for today's presentation, I did add to the agenda a slide that recaps the, the gas assets that we recently acquired. I think that's important because this is the first quarter that we're reporting out with these new assets kind of ingested into our operations and our financial results. So I'll take a minute here on this slide to really just recap, you know, for you, the board, but also for our customers listening, kind of the value and how we'll see, you know, this flow through our financials. You know, the big picture is, you know, years ago, as the board is familiar with, you know, we recognized the significant generation needs of our community, and, you know, with the board's leadership and management and the community and our advisory committees, there was large dialogue throughout the community, which resulted in the board-approved generation plan in January of 2023. And so as part of that new plan that was approved by our board, inclusive in there was new build gas generation as part of the portfolio. And so what this purchase actually did, it really represents the execution of that board-approved generation plan from January 23, but better. And, and that's what I'll kind of stress here, you know, why it was better. Ultimately, this was really, you know, an opportunity that we saw to get more value for a lower price than we had planned, and we took a lot of risk off the table by doing that. Some of the key stats, and I'll note here just for those listening, was, you know, we purchased in totality a little over 1,700 megawatts of gas-fired generation at the cost that you can see on the slide of $785 million. What we had in our plan as part of that generation plan in '23 was actually building 1,500 megawatts for about $1.5 billion just nominally. And so just on the face of it, there's a reduction in spend, and you're getting the equivalent megawatts. The, the NPV value was around $360 million when you look at it over a 25-year window, so there was a lot of positive value to the, to the assets we got. And as you look at it kind of in the near term for us, you know, there's going to be a lot of benefit in the long term, but in the near term, you're also seeing a lot of benefit as well on the wholesale side, which I'll mention about. The only comment about, you know, having near-term impact on our financial metrics is that we borrowed the full $785 million to do this. These were dollars we were otherwise going to borrow over time, but obviously, when we began the fiscal year, we didn't anticipate buying these plants, so that is obviously will be a variance to the budget that was approved. But all said, you know, when you look at this over a 25-year view, you're talking about a dollar-per-month savings to our customers, and anything we can do to improve on the plan that we had set forth, you know, we really wanted to do. So that's kind of a Cliff Notes summary, and that really serves as a backdrop for, you know, the remainder of this discussion. So starting with, you know, just our core business, our local residential and commercial customers, you know, the, the warmer month of July that we saw really helped boost kind of our, our local revenues, really to come in on plan. There's a lot of puts and takes, but there's not much of a story when it comes to our kind of core local business and how that compared to plan. The real story really is that second bullet around wholesale revenues. It's going to continue to outperform, you know, our plan that we had anticipated at the beginning of the year, mostly because we didn't anticipate having as much length as we have. But I will obviously take the opportunity to remind, you know, especially those listening, that while the, the wholesale revenue is a nice boost in the near term, these are, you know, temporary revenues, you know, that we don't plan for on a year-to-year basis when they, you know, really exceed the plan significantly. The, from the cost perspective, the same trends on O&amp;M that we spoke about in the first quarter around additional spend around storm-related work, gas, gas leak repairs, those are kind of baked into our expenses, but they're, you know, nondiscretionary in the sense that this is about safety and getting folks back up. What is included now is the expected additional transition costs and the fixed O&amp;M costs that come with running these plants. Obviously, we anticipate as part of our due diligence, and in that positive NPV number I mentioned, that we would take on kind of, you know, additional routine O&amp;M. So all of those, you know, will culminate in what we see in our financials when you look at the O&amp;M expense line item. On capital, the theme is the same as it was last quarter. We're having transmission-related investments that are exceeding our forecasts. Again, I'll break this out on future slides. Again, this is a lot of work driven by needs, you know, ERCOT needs and direction, projects being accelerated and things like that that are of value. I'm going to save my comments on forward guidance until I get to the end of the presentation. So let's keep a kind of focus here on the flow of funds slide. This is the one that I've shown in the past. You know, this is the one that mirrors how the application of our revenue should be applied, you know, in accordance with our debt bond covenants. This is the closest thing we have to a cash flow statement. And I'll highlight some of these things because, you know, I think it's worth noting. You can see at the top line under the actuals column in the middle there, you know, that's about $86 million over plan on the revenue side. That's positive, that is inclusive of fuel and non-fuel revenue, but on the revenue side, it's a positive story. When you actually look at the next line, and you subtract and apply revenues to fuel, you see that the actuals are coming in $35 million below our plan. This is really great. And I've said it before, you know, to the extent fuel is, is lower than, than we anticipated, that benefit goes down, goes through to the customer bill by a lower fuel adjustment than we had forecasted. And so the, the story on the next line is that operation and maintenance that I had talked about on the previous slide being over plan, and you see that, you know, we're about $21 million, $22 million over plan. The drivers are those, you know, three main reasons that I had mentioned. But when you look at the, the net of all that, the revenues net of our operating expenses, according to the flow of funds, we're still $100 million above our plan for the first six months, so that's a positive, which leaves us, again, you know, additional revenues that can be applied to our debt service, which is the following line. You'll note that that's about $12.5 million more than planned. That is because we issued more debt than we had planned, and so we have additional interest expense. But again, you're seeing in the totality of this, a net benefit here to, you know, to our financials. And then once you finish the application of additional R&amp;R and city payment, that line at the bottom there, it says total R&amp;R fund additions. You know, that's about close to $80 million in additional dollars that are dropping to our R&amp;R fund. Again, that's a positive story. So this flow is kind of representing all the themes that I just mentioned. For transparency and just visibility, we included, you know, at the very bottom, a breakout of the capital plan. Now, our capital plan is a combination of cash and, and debt, right? So the debt service I spoke about is inclusive of all of this capital. But because we have a unique year, we have one line item that speaks to our capital for our, we call them Corpus Christi and Laredo plants, that's what the CCL stands for, I believe that's in the appendix as well. You'll note the variance there, so obviously, in terms of our capital budget, you'll note that we're, we're overplanned, but that's a key driver. I broke out non-transmission and transmission, just for visibility, because they have two different recovery mechanisms. But you can see that the, the net of the two of them is pretty even, they kind of wash themselves out from a, you know, a total capital spend perspective, which means it kind of has a washout effect on our metrics. And I'll continue to just have this visibility each quarter so that we can see the, you know, the breakout of, of the capital plan. Now, the new slide here that I'll speak to is a view of our net income. This previously was included in the appendix of the last quarter. This tells a similar story. Again, net income, it's following, you know, accounting rules, which is slightly different than the flow of funds, so there's not a one-for-one reconciliation, so to speak, but there is a similarity in terms of, in terms of story and messaging. What you can see, just kind of walking forward left to right, was that we had, in our forecast at the beginning of the year, identified 5.2 million as what our net income would look like. And obviously, there's a lot of puts and takes that you see that take you to a much larger number. The first two bars, really when you net them together, are about level. I think the interesting story here is the, the lower age receivables means that we are hitting less to bad debt expense, and that is driven by the, the, the history of, of how we're collecting. So we're seeing an improvement there, so we're having to expense less, and that is a lift to revenue. So that's a positive kind of underlying theme. I think the big story, obviously, that I mentioned before is your wholesale revenue. You can see that it's about $106 million above plan. Now, you would expect to see it significantly above plan because we have so much additional length. The plan coming in was about $23.5 million for the midway part of the year, so this is 106 above that. I think what's interesting when you break out that 106, about 70% of that is driven by the new assets. So when I talk about a majority driven by the new assets we acquired, that's the benefit there. And, you know, we'll grow into that length over the coming years, so I would expect that to go down, but, you know, I think that provides a little transparency to that. that to go down, but, you know, I think that provides a little transparency to that. Couple of other, you know, interest rate volatility, that's a non-cash item, that's a mark-to-market on our fixed investments, that'll ebb and flow. We are seeing a higher interest income. I think rates stayed elevated, higher than we had forecasted, so we're seeing a little lift in just our money sitting in money markets and so forth. And then the, the additional overspend on operation and maintenance, same rationale that I mentioned earlier, you see that reflected here. But again, a lot of other positive lift on the revenue side that more than compensates in, you know, for that. A non-cash item, and then, you know, debt-related expenses, this is, again, is the additional interest expense mainly driven by the additional interest expense that, you know, we incurred by purchasing these assets. So again, it's an accounting view of a similar story resulting in net income of 86 million, which is, you know, over the plan of 5.2. The next thing that I'll hit real quick is our past due accounts. Again, continues to be a positive story here. The, the total number reflective past due accounts is 135 million. I'll, I'll note some stats. I think in, in the coming years, we'll address some of the earlier feedback of looking at trends and improvement in the different subcategories. But to draw your attention to the, the larger $36 million on the far right, you know, this is, these are the folks that we continue to focus on that are at risk of disconnection. That number of accounts, you know, it's gone down about 11,000 from last month, and that number has come down from a high of 55 million. So we're continuing to move people out of this bucket, and we're continuing to bring that balance down. The other fun fact about this is typically when, you know, if a customer gets disconnected, I think I've mentioned this before, and Indiana has as well, about 90% or a little bit more than 90% of the time, that customer will call back to get reconnected, and in order to do that, they got to be on a plan. And so we can look at that bucket and say, okay, a little over 90% of those folks are going to slide on over to the far-left bucket, which is a bucket of folks that are currently on payment plans. And the remaining folks, obviously, would be put in that middle bucket, you know, put in collections, you know, potentially to be written off. And as, drawing your attention to the other two buckets now, that's 68 million that's on payment plans. Again, what continues to be a fantastic stat, and Indiana's team has provided this, is that we have now an 80% success rate with folks in on their plan. When we began this, we were close to maybe 50 or 60%, I think, about 40%. So, and to kudos really to Indiana's team and all the folks that are kind of interfacing with customers to keep them on their plans and making plans they can afford. So we're still bringing that balance down. That was at a peak of close to 90 million. And then in terms of collections, you know, what I will note here is, you know, we have a third party that will, you know, ultimately try and get funds received from our customers, but in the event's not, it's written off. From an accounting perspective, we have fully reserved for this. So the bad debt expense I was talking about a couple of slides ago, well, we've been hitting the P&amp;L. So to the extent we do write them off, you're not seeing a P&amp;L impact or net income impact to that. So I think those are, you know, my, my comments here, and, and, you know, we'll continue to try and refine how we present this and share the story, but this is through, again, the end of July, a positive story. Next quarter, we'll kind of see the impact of the summer bills, which will usually kind of slow things down a bit, and we're not disconnecting. So we may see some, some of that in the results when we get to next quarter. And on this slide, this is another slide that got pulled from the appendix. We've included this before. This has a lot more cities than the last one I've shown. We wanted to reflect additional cities or co-ops within the state of Texas. It doesn't change the story. When you look at San Antonio and CPS from a combined electric and gas perspective, we're still reflecting, you know, the lowest in this instance. I wouldn't say being the lowest is our goal necessarily, but we are focused on being some of the lowest. And, you know, this is probably the best reflection of our cost structure when you can benchmark, you know, from two other utilities. Because I've mentioned this before, you know, the, the cost of what we have to do isn't any different than in San Antonio as in Dallas or wherever else. And all the things that we're buying are the things that came from the procurement discussion, and we've all seen those dollars. So this is a really good benchmark, I think, for us to use with that lens. And I think before I hand it over to Elena, the only thing I want to do is kind of mention kind of what to expect going forward, and this is some of the, the comments from the forward, forward guidance slide that I had skipped over. But, you know, the, the Corpus Christi Laredo plants, as I've been calling them, the new assets, they've provided us with additional length that we think will continue to flow through the balance of the year. You know, we're going to revise that wholesale revenue forecast north, and I think, you know, net of fuel, we're probably looking at over $200 million of revenue over plan. And so those will be, you know, conversations that'll materialize when we do the quarter three update to see how the balance of the summer really has performed. You know, we'll continue to monitor progress on bad debts. I think the bad debt expense kind of going down that we saw in the net income waterfall, I hope that's a trend that at least continues to stay levelized or improves. That's a positive there. And I think the story around the O&amp;M and capital, the, the themes I mentioned at the beginning remain the same. I think we'll still have those overages for the storms and the gas leak repairs and the anticipated O&amp;M expense that comes with acquiring, you know, 1,700 megawatts, additional megawatts. That said, on the financial metrics perspective, when you kind of take all of that into account, we still expect our financial metrics to be at or above the, the thresholds that you see in the Financial Resiliency Index and the, that we have as an enterprise scorecard metric. And, you know, there's more in the appendix, and Elena can mention that, but I think that's important for us to, to note that we anticipate still coming in above three, which is where that metric is when you take it in totality. So I will pause there and let Elena wrap up on the following slides.
So continuing our second quarter performance update, I'm going to share information regarding our current performance through quarter two. This is our enterprise scorecard. It includes the measures that we are targeting for year-end, fiscal year-end, as well as a number of the key initiatives that we have in flight supporting our Vision 2027 strategic plan. So I'm going to highlight from a milestone perspective, one project that is, we're marking as, as at risk just for transparency. We do believe we're going to be able to recover this, this project, but wanted to make the board aware, under the category of system resilience and growth, we have a suite of projects which involve our advanced distribution management system, our EMS, and our GIS systems. We have in, in quarter two, we did encounter a schedule delay with our EMS upgrade. The EMS stands for Energy Management System. You can think of this as kind of the, the operational technology, the neural net that, that controls our transmission system. And so we are in the process of upgrading that system. We encountered, the supplier that we're working with encountered some hardware delays, which delayed the project, the project's factory acceptance testing by about a month. But we do believe through work that the team has done, that we will be able to bring that schedule back and, and do plan to complete that project and go live in September of 2025. From a metrics perspective, there are two metrics that I will highlight as at risk or unattainable. The first is on the left, our system, average customer outage duration. And, and I, I should pause and let you all know, on slides 18 and 19, you can see all of the metric definitions, our, our current year-to-date actual, our planned year-end, and our, our latest estimate. So you'll be able to see all of the information as well as anything that's at risk or unrecoverable. But you can think of average customer outage duration as in the, in the span of a year, you know, when customers experience outages on our system, on average, how long is that outage? We've been shooting for a year-end target of just under 58 minutes, so that would, that would essentially say across our system, on average, a customer is out, when they're out, they're out about 58 minutes. We do expect right now on our latest estimate to be coming in over 67 minutes. And the, the drivers behind our outage duration being longer than expected are largely weather. I briefed the board on our quarter one update related to some severe weather patterns. We had some, an, a large, longer-than-planned severe weather patterns in the months of January with an ice event, and April was one of the wettest Aprils on record. And what this did was cause equipment failures, tree outages. And I, I think we're seeing some positive trends, but we, we do believe that this is at risk for us missing. We also had two very high days in June and July that were a result of storms. We had equipment failures, and trees were also major contributors. We're looking at our poor performing circuits, enhancing inspections, focusing on tree trimming in areas that, that have been problems for us, continuing in substations to put wildlife mitigation. Critters get into our substations and cause entire circuits to operate, so we're working on ways to keep the, the wildlife out of our substations. And really think, you know, we're continuing to invest in our capex reliability programs, really thank the board for approving our reclosers that were discussed earlier. That's one of our key tools that we, we can use to sectionalize our system, and when outages occur, reduce the, the number of customers that are impacted by those outages. As was discussed before, another metric that is unrecoverable is our safety performance with the, the tragic loss of a teammate during this fiscal year. So with that, that concludes Cory and my remarks on quarter, on the second quarter performance. We would be happy to entertain any questions that the board may have.
We're going to go ahead and open discussion to the board. We're going to start with Mr. Steen.
I'm going to begin by thanking our Chief Financial Officer, Cory Kojinski, and our Chief Strategy Officer, Elena Bell, for their presentations and for your continuing exemplary work for CPS Energy. Looking at slide 11, which is the one I want to focus on, for the first six or so years I served on the board, the trustees were intensely and appropriately focused on what we've called our big three financial metrics, namely, first, debt service coverage ratio, a credit metric used to understand how easily a company's cash flow can cover its annual interest and principal obligations. Second, days' cash on hand, a liquidity measure, metric that, excuse me, a liquidity metric that measures the number of days a company can pay its operating expenses with the amount of cash currently available. And third, debt capitalization ratio, a leverage metric that measures the total amount of outstanding company debt as a percentage of total capitalization. In my early service on the board, these big three financial metrics, so important to our three credit rating agencies, comprise three or 20% of our tiers, of our 16 Tier One metrics. However, earlier this year, when it was disclosed that for fiscal year 2024, CPS Energy again fell short of meeting six of 16 Tier One metric targets, management and this board, over my objection, proceeded to jettison the Tier One metrics and replace them with eight easier-to-obtain goals. This new reporting approach moved away from honing in on the big three financial metrics. At the bottom of this slide we're looking at, within the gray boxes, you can see the eight new enterprise measures and their fiscal year 2025 targets. And please note the fourth one over entitled Fiscal Resiliency, where the target equals or is greater than three. So now put up slide 19, please. So note, note that debt capitalization, and you, you see that in the, in the second column, it's the second one down, debt capitalization, has now been downgraded or demoted to one of seven components of so-called fiscal, of the fiscal resiliency score. And if you look in that third column, its index weight is only 27%. So as I've said before, it's hard to escape the conclusion that the purpose of presenting CPS Energy's financial strength in this new format is to bury or obfuscate important metrics trending in the wrong direction. With that background, I want to briefly highlight how seriously out of culture our debt capitalization ratio is. Before proceeding, I'd like to take a moment to focus on the metrics itself, as I'm often asked by listeners, why do you monitor this ratio so closely? Please understand that our credit rating agency analysts do dive deeply into our financial data, but over the years, they've developed shorthand ways to measure financial health. In the case of whether a company is overborrowing or overleveraging, it's the debt capitalization ratio. It's not unlike my cardiologist friends, who, when asked about a single marker for heart disease, will point to the LDL number that's part of one's lipoprotein panel when one gets a blood test. It's, it's one number you can look at. So please put up slide 14. You'll see at the bottom a definition of debt capitalization ratio, and it states up there, a measurement that, measurement that shows the proportion of a debt a company uses, company uses to finance its assets relative to the amount of cash, and then there's equity in parentheses, used for the same purpose. So Mr. Kojinski, help me with this. Am I correct that since CPS Energy has no shareholders, it has no equity?
We have what's called net position, and so that, we call it debt capitalization. And so the net position, which is, in effect, our, our earnings being reinvested, is part of the equation. So when we measure that, it's total debt over total debt plus net position. In other organizations, that would be equity or retained earnings and things like that.
Yeah, that's my understanding. So the denominator is total capitalization, is, is derived from adding debt and net position. And then if somebody says, what's net position, that for public utilities, it's typically presented as accumulated net revenues or retained earnings in financial statements, and that it represents, and they put it in quotes, profits over time. And so I, I think I have a pretty good understanding of it. Is that, is that racing? Okay. So, Mr. Kojinski, it doesn't seem all that long ago that CPS Energy's total debt was less than $6 billion. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the end of fiscal year 2022, CPS Energy's total debt was 5.89 billion.
Fiscal '22, I don't remember offhand.
Does it sound right?
Sounds ballpark-ish.
I was somewhat shocked to learn, when you and I conferred 10 days ago, that it's now swelled to $8 billion. So please confirm that I'm stating this correctly, that in three years, our debt has grown by So I'll repeat for emphasis, in three years, CPS Energy's debt has grown by 36% and more than a third.
I guess I can't confirm that without the appropriate context, and that the context is, it is, number one, not something we should measure in aggregate, but that's why you rightly referenced using a ratio to measure it. And two, I think it's consistent with the strategy and the plan laid out by the Board of Trustees. And I guess, third, I'd say, the, the conversations with the rating agencies have incorporated current debt, future debt, you know, impacts to that, and the AA minus stable that we have is inclusive of those expectations. So while the nominal amount of debt does increase, there are appropriate reasons, and I don't think they should be taken out of context and, and just mentioned in isolation.
And Cory, that, that is kind of tethered to our conversations with the rating agencies about the high period of investment and growth of our community that we have to support. So, you know, again, you're either making investments or you're falling behind. There is no standing still, and, and that, you know, and there's two ways to, to do it. A mix of rate increases, which we have encountered, and we've, we've executed on, along with use of, appropriate use of debt, you know, to not have to ask our rate pairs for all of the investment that we've made. So that is a balanced approach, that has been part of our strategy from the get-go that this board has weighed in on. Your tethered to the debt issue, Trustee Steen, is your perspective. It is not the plan laid forth in front of this board and approved.
And I think I'd note, in terms of the weighting, the, I think S&amp;P in particular puts greater weight on the coverage ratio, which is why it got the highest weighting in our metric, and then debt cap was second. So again, we were, again, mirroring the, the weight in which the agencies also look.
Mr. Steen, are we good? Because we have other comments.
Yeah, this won't take long. So if you'll return to slide 19, and, and then let's examine the numbers in the row, in the row label debt capitalization. We can see that CPS Energy's debt capitalization ratio as of July 30 is 63.5%, with the latest year-end estimate being 63.8%. Our three credit rating agencies have long signaled that the threshold for this leverage metric is 60%. 60% is the upper limit, and when the company hits 60%, alarm bells should sound. In November of last year, as you presented to the city council, in connection with your rate increase request, you supplied a chart that showed the debt capitalization ratio sharply spiking, beginning with fiscal year 2024, but not topping 64% until fiscal year 2027. So please put up slide five.
Do you got it?
And note particularly the, the last bullet point, which reads, our financial metrics are expected to outperform or stay in line with rating agency thresholds, and I contend that this statement, as, as our, as it relates to our debt capitalization ratio, is simply not accurate. And you've already addressed this, Mr. Garza, but I was going to ask you to explain why And you've already addressed this, Mr. Garza, but I was going to ask you to explain why, on your watch, CPS Energy's debt has ballooned to $8 billion, and our debt capitalization ratio has risen to 64%, and why you're not more concerned about this trend.
Can I just clarify?
Thank you for the comments, and we're going to continue to go. Make sure that those comments get submitted into notes.
If he's not going to answer, then I have, I just make a request of Ms. Ramirez. To wrap up my remarks regarding CPS Energy's debt, I'd like to ask two things of Mr. Kaczynski. First, would you please update the debt capitalization chart that Natalia Lopez emailed to trustees on your behalf on November 16 of last year? And I've got a copy of it here, if you want, you know, for reference. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I don't, but I'm sure I will when I see it.
All right. And then, second, would you?
Sorry, I'm confused about that one. That you want him to update a chart from November of last year?
Yeah. It's something that was done in connection with the rate increase. You've seen this before.
Okay, I just, I'll take down as the action item to take this to, right. I don't know if it needs to be updated. I'm not, I just, I don't know.
Well, for example, it's showing, it was that chart where you showed debt capitalization ratio going out to fiscal year 2027 or whatever.
I think, I guess my point is, if it was accurate at the time, I don't know that it needs to be updated.
Right. I'd like it updated, because I'd like to see with changed circumstances, because it showed us in fiscal year 2029 reaching a debt capitalization ratio of 67.8%. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't get close to 64 until fiscal year 2027, so things have changed, and so I'd like this.
I have a lot of answers for that, if you don't mind. I guess the first one.
Can we let him finish?
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll, we'll open it up to all the trustees.
The second thing, would you please provide trustees a chart showing total debt, starting with fiscal year 2015 and projecting through fiscal year 2029? And I just ask Ms. Ramirez if these can be considered action items from today's meeting.
I'll take that requested action items, please. Thank you.
Okay, so what I have is that I will take the board communication that was distributed November 16, 2023, and talk to Cory about whether he feels that chart needs to be revised, and update you all accordingly with that response. I also heard to create a new set of financial analysis, I think that's got to go through the chair to be instructed. So I would ask that, sir, that you get with the chair. We generally are not going to create new sets of financial analysis based on any single request, but I don't want to, I don't want to anticipate an answer. So I will take that request and talk to the.
Sure. Thank you.
Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
Say a couple of things that I've said before, and again, for those listening, 60% is not the target for us. The range between 60 to 70% is what we've been gunning for, and that's part of the plan. So I think that is, that's the appropriate measure that I'll reference going forward, and that's why you won't see a plan that says less than 60%. Secondly, those metrics, again, are aligned with the board-approved generation plan investments from January 23. So the driver for debt being higher this year is we pulled forward the investments. So we spent $785 million, borrowed $785 million extra this year. But in the long term, in that board-approved plan, we're not borrowing $1.5 billion. So that's what I referenced in the slide that says modest impact on our debt cap, because we're pulling forward that investment. So I think those are the two things that I just really want to point out. The rest of stuff, you know, Shannon, we can take the action item. I just wanted to clarify those points.
Yeah, just one comment. From my beginning on this board, we've been told that the debt capitalization ratio is 60%, and that means the upper limit of it. So that's been changed?
The rating agency guidance that we've reviewed with our financial advisors for the last three years, at the AA minus stable that we're at, the totality of the big three that you reference, managing the other two that we have and keeping debt cap within 60 to 70% should keep us at our current rating. To the extent there's that stuff outside in the ERCOT market that presents other risk, those factors flex on the risk profile of this organization. But where we are today, I'm going to keep saying the range is 60 to 70, and that's kind of where our planning thresholds are.
Mr. Steen, any other comments? Okay, I just want to make sure, we're going to look at the document that he presented, and then I'll research a little bit more the request for updating financial analysis, and then I'll get back to Mr. Steen. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for additional comments by Board of Trustees. Dr. Romero?
And thinking about people watching these meetings, our customers and employees, I don't want to have to rediscuss things we have already decided. I appreciate that any trustee can talk about whatever they want to talk about. But to some extent, I don't want to revisit things that we've already decided. I don't think that's good form. We decided them. We're not going to relitigate them or re-legislate them at every meeting. At the same time, I don't want people to think that my silence means that I have any concerns. I don't have concerns. I believe in what we're doing. I believe in what we've agreed upon. I believe in everything I've voted on here. We're in the fastest-growing city in the nation, and we're into all the predictions and more of what climate change is going to be. And so I just wanted to say, we agreed, we agreed on all these things. You're not doing a bait and switch or anything on this. So, and I have two really small questions. Well, one's a comment, so, and it's my comment I always make. I still just think on Slide 8 that it would be more transparent if we knew what the movement was among these boxes. And I would just like that additional level. So when we say, this has dropped, this one box has dropped, I'd like to know if we could, where is that going to? Where is it going to the good box, which is on payment plans, or is it going to the bad box of in collections?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for your comments ahead of the meeting regarding that. The customer team is working on a trend analysis and to track those dollars in that much more, I guess, just clearer manner. And so you'll see that as, for our next updates.
Okay, thank you. And then just my real small question on Slide 5. When you say total capital is expected to come in higher than planned due to transmission-related investments, is that because some of those investments are returned to us through the PUC process, or is it because the transmission lines actually allow us to sell more on the wholesale market?
No, so this would be transmission spend is coming in higher than planned, so that's work that's been pulled forward, again, from the expense side. Or there's additional work, and I think Howard Rose is one of the examples, that we're continuing to carry over. So the expense side, separate from that, is the recovery of those dollars. That is the, the recovery will come at the state level, and that hasn't happened yet, and there's always a bigger lag to that recovery. I only note it because it's a thing this year, where it's much higher than normal. Otherwise, I wouldn't have really called it out, because it really kind of has a negligible, negligible impact when it's typically stable. It just hasn't been stable this year.
And this does not reflect what will come back to us?
No, this just reflects kind of here and now, which is just cash out the door, and yeah.
There's a minimum of six-month lag in applying for, you know, interim T costs and getting those funds reimbursed to us. So, you know, we will carry them for a bit till that process, yeah, happens.
And I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I do want to build upon Dr. Romero's comment. We voted on this, number one. Number two, the difference between yesteryears and today is that we did go to the community. We did vote, we did get two rate cases, and we were very specific about how that money was going to be spent. And the other thing I would like to add, the difference from 10 years ago, even 2015, I mean, there's a fact, there's extreme weather patterns. And so those are the, not even anomalies, but those are the situation, things that change. And our, our plan, the 2027, even 2025 utility framework, is reflective of today's environment. I, again, I commend Mr. Steen for always, hey, let's watch the dollars, let's watch the dollars. I get it. We were, we're trying to be, we are responsive, we should be responsive, and we should be looking at that. But collectively, some of us voted for it, and some voted against, but we voted on these items. This is not, again, a switch. Again, we're very transparent, everything's to the public. How we measure that one is clearly written. And again, we've been responsive to the rate agencies, we've been responsive to the rate payers, and we continue to be responsive to anybody who asks us a question. So those are just my only comments. Is there anybody else wanting to add any comments? Dr. Mackey, mayor? Okay. Then I want to thank everybody's lively discussion, and we're going to go ahead and move to the last item on the agenda, which is, if we could please review the action items, Ms. Ramirez?
Yes, ma'am. We had closed all previously open action items. I have five new action items from today. The first from Trustee Steen is to request that we include his ongoing objections to the STEP program in the minutes of today's meeting. The second request I have is from the mayor, which is to follow up with additional, more granular information to both trustees and to council on the use of STEP programs by district and in areas outside of the city of San Antonio but within our service territory. Third item I have is from Trustee Steen, that is to review the November 16, 2023 board communication and the charts contained within, to determine if those charts need to be updated. And I will work through the chair to get clarification on that question. The fourth item I have is from Trustee Steen, and it is to request creation of financial analysis on debt trends. I'm going to discuss that with Cory Kaczynski, Rudy, and the chair, and I'll work through the chair to get the response to Trustee Steen on that one. And the last I had is from the vice chair, and it was a request for clarity and additional information on trending for customer past-due accounts. That'll be included in the next update on past-due accounts. I had four items that came out of executive session, and I will update the board directly on those items.
I just want to make sure that, are those the four items that we all brought? I think we're good on those four items. Okay, if the board doesn't have any more questions or comments, I would like a request, motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Dr. Mackey, second by the mayor. The meeting concludes at 4:21. Thank you, everybody.